Like call to order the October 23rd, 2023 Powhatan County Board of Supervisors meeting. At this time, Mr. Williams, if you would help us with the invocation, Ms. Carmack, if you would do the pledge of allegiance, that would be great.
United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Heavenly Father, thank you for all the many blessings we enjoy in Powhatan County. And we pray tonight for all the victims in Israel, and we pray for peace and we pray for justice.
Thank you. This time, any questions, postponed agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, go ahead.
Are we're going to move B to A and A to B?
That's part of it, yes. The first, I guess, change we'll have is what I'd like to suggest is I'd like to remove the minutes off the consent agenda. August 15th, 2023 workshop minutes and move them to, let's move them to new business 12A. And then move A and B onto B and C under new business. And at the same time, I would like to move that the public hearings 13A and 13B be reversed. They will become, 13A will be, will become 13B, 13B will become 13A. Can I get a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries. County Administrator updates?
Yep, just a couple of brief updates this evening.
We do approve the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I need a motion for formal approval of the amended agenda.
Go move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Mr. Shorty, County Administrator update?
Yes, sir, a couple of brief updates. One, if anybody was coming in from Route 60, probably saw the message boards. But Route 13, Old Buckingham Road, will be closed for repairs to the Colonial Gas Pipeline, starting tomorrow through Saturday. So again, if you're coming into the village from Route 60 West, you'll need to keep going. There'll be detour signs and take either Scottville Road or Skaggs Road. If you live Millcore or somewhere back here, you'll be granted access, but through traffic, we'll need to make that detour during this week. And then lots of people are probably aware, as a tradition for several years, Scottsville Community, just down the street here, opens itself up for trick-or-treaters. It's so many people come that it can be a lot sometimes. So this year, our Economic Development Office, the Chamber of Commerce, the Scottsville Community, as well as a bunch of businesses in the village, and Parks and Rec Department have all gotten together and we're going to expand that to be a whole village trick-or-treating. We'll have county offices open from 3:30 to 5:00 for trick-or-treaters on Halloween. Then that will transition to Scottville Village Businesses and the Village Park being open for trick-or-treaters from 4:00 to 7:30. And then the Powhatan Fairgrounds will have their traditional trunk retreat from 5:00 to 10:00 that night. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Shorty. Next up, proclamations.
So this one, Operation Green Light 2023. Our deputy county administrator, Mr. Will Hagie, will read the resolution and it will be presented to Major Retired Peter Amico on behalf of the veterans of the county. And I'll read Mr. Amico's biography here. And as I'm reading this, keep in mind, it's a bridged biography. His actual list of accomplishments is much longer. So it starts with Major Amico is a graduate of the United States Military Academy at West Point. Upon graduation, he was commissioned a second lieutenant in the armor branch, serving as a tank platoon leader and company executive officer. In 1978, he transferred to the field artillery. Since then, he has held various positions in the 25th Introphy Division, Schofield Barracks in Hawaii, as fourth observer, fire support officer, fire direction officer. Then the United States Field Artillery Training Center in Fort Sill, Oklahoma. Then the 59th Ordnance Brigade in Germany and the 82nd Airborne Division in Fort Bragg, North Carolina. Major Amico is also a graduate of the Combined Arms Services Staff School and the Command and General Staff College. In 1995, he retired from the Army and became the senior Army instructor of the Cumberland High School Junior ROTC program, from which he retired in 2015. Major Amico and his family live in Powhatan. He is married to the former Colleen Bowden. They have three children, Alyssa, 44, Peter Jr., 42, Joseph, 38, daughter-in-law Leah, and grandson Peter III, age eight. His military awards and badges include Meritorious Service Medal, two awards, Army Commendation Medal, three awards, Army Achievement Medal, two awards, Commander's Award of Civil, civilian service, National Defense Medal, two awards, Army Service Ribbon, Overseas Service Ribbon, two awards, and Parachute this badge. So again, we thank Mr. Amico for his service and others in the county and around who have given similar sacrifices on behalf of the country. Thank you, and Mr. Hagie, you'll read the resolution.
Whereas the residents of Powhatan County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Powhatan County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Powhatan County appreciates the sacrifices of all of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Therefore, be it resolved with designation as a green light for Veterans County. Powhatan County hereby declares from October through Veterans Day, November 11th, 2023, a time to salute and honor service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, be it further resolved that in observation of Operation Green Light, Powhatan County encourage its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November 6th to the 12th, 2023, adopted by the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors on October 23, 2023.
I am currently the chaplain of our American Legion Post, and so on behalf of the American Legion Post 201, and on behalf of all the veterans of Powhatan County, I thank the board for this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Major Amico. Thank you to all the servicemen and women in this country.
Yeah, and that moves us to proclamation P. 202309, Emily Davis for achieving Eagle Scout.
Ms. Davis, if you'd come down. Emily Davis, a 16-year-old junior at Powhatan High School. First female in Powhatan County to achieve this award. She's a founding member of Troop 1833. Her official date of achieving Eagle Scout rank was July the 23rd, or excuse me, July the 12th, 2023. Eagle Scout project that included creating an agility park for the Richmond Animal League in Midlothian and helping to create a new walking path for the facility. The board would like to recognize you, Emily, with proclamation as the first female Eagle Scout in Powhatan County. Whereas the community of Powhatan County, Virginia, has long and a proud tradition of supporting the growth and development of its young citizens. And whereas the Boy Scouts of America has played a vital role in the lives of countless young people throughout our community, instilling in them the values of leadership, service, character. And whereas we recognize that the path to earning the esteemed rank of Eagle Scout is one that requires dedication, perseverance, and a commitment to the betterment of one's community. And whereas it is with great pride and admiration that we acknowledge and celebrate the achievement of Powhatan County's very first female Eagle Scout, Emily C. Davis, who has demonstrated exceptional dedication and leadership throughout her journey to the highest rank attainable in the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas by following in both her father and brother's footsteps, on July the 12th, 2023, Ms. Davis has shown tremendous character and determination in achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, thereby setting an inspiring example for all youth in our community. And whereas the values and skills she has acquired on her path to becoming an Eagle Scout will serve her well in her future endeavors, contributing to the betterment of not only herself, but also the entire community. Now, therefore, we, the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of the citizens, do hear my proclaim our sincere appreciation and admiration for Emily C. Davis and extend our heartfelt congratulations to her for becoming Powhatan County's first female Eagle Scout. We applaud Ms. Davis for her dedication, hard work, and commitment to the principles of the Boy Scouts of America. Her achievement is a testament of the spirit of leadership and service that thrives within our community. And we are confident that she will continue to make her family and community proud in all of her future endeavors.
All right. And next, we will have a presentation from Firefly on broadband expansion in the county. So we have Mr. Gary Wood, President and CEO of Central Electric Opera, Firefly.
Well, thank you for having me again. And I've got a couple of slides, we'll give you a quick update. We're beginning to get some traction in the county. It's taken a while, it's been a little slower than I'd like to have seen it move. So, thanks for having me down. First, if you remember, when I was here before, we had had one area in the northwest section of the county. We've had the fiber in place for a while, and I'll show it on the map here in a minute. All right. Let's see. That green area up there, it's called the Cartersville Extension. It's on Trenton Road and Cartersville Road and some little areas around it goes in front of about, I think it's 270 homes. I've got some numbers later. We are still connecting folks up there. That was our first construction into Powhatan. We learned a few things, we found out there were a lot more, what my staff calls private roads. I tend to think of them as shared driveways because they tend to not be roads in subdivisions, but roads that have four to five to eight homes served off of them, and we have to get individuals easements to build along there. They're not in the state system. That took us a little longer because we did not realize there were as many. So we had a learning process there. You can see the area in purple that says awaiting RUS approval. That area is funded by USDA grant, not a state grant. That's going to have a backbone segment that'll serve the rest of the county. And we've been working to get that approved, and I have an update on that in just a little bit. That's pretty good news. And then the rest of the area where we'll move into design and construction on that soon. So we went by 295 homes in that green area. We had 204 folks signed up, almost 70% of the homes, which is a really high take rate. That just shows the need for broadband in these areas. We have 67 or had 67 as of the end of September. We've got a handful more. I did push our contractor last week. They were waiting for all of the easement issues to be resolved before they sent people back in. And I told them that was a mistake. I'm not sure how we got there. So I think we've got about another 75 or so that are issued out for construction. And this week, they've called in a number of locates and they'll start getting those connected. We do have another, it'll be about 40 or 50 affected by the easement areas that are being finished up this week with final fiber construction. We'll have splicing that'll come within the couple of weeks after that, and then we'll get the other folks up there connected. All total, we'll end up going by 2,055 homes by the time we finish in Powhatan. We anticipate over 1,200 folks signing up. Here's what we have done. We completed the field data collection. It's actually a few more miles of construction than that. Those plans and specs were submitted to RUS for approval. These slides we put together when I thought we were coming at the start of the month, and then we got delayed. So actually, we received the RUS approval on our plans and specs last week on the 18th. Now we'll submit a contract that they have to review, but it's the same contract they've reviewed before. It's their own contract. Hopefully, it'll turn around within a couple of weeks, and then we'll let the contractors start work. So they should move, I would guess, five to eight underground crews in. They'll be working along 522 and 60 originally to start with, and then ultimately on some laterals off of that. We already have a communications hut in place at the South Side Electric Substation, which is behind the Dominion Substation on 522. So the hut, we moved ahead a little bit, and we're just waiting to get the fiber into there to light the electronics. And then from there, we go back out and provide service. We were waiting for a while on B dot permits to cross the bridge at Maidens. We've received that permit, and we've actually let the contract and ordered the materials. I understand we've got a couple more weeks before the materials come in, and then you'll see some construction going across into Goochlin. Ultimately, that ties in the network so that you'll be tied in in Powhatan, up through Goochlin, and also down through Cumberland to give us dual feed. So if anything ever happens to a feed from one direction, your feed from the other direction, we don't have interruption to service. So that's an important one. We also had B dot permits. We can only be permitted two miles at a time to work in the B dot right-of-way or under one permit. So we actually have 93 miles total of construction in this RUS project that was completed, that we received approval on last week. So we end up with close to 50 permits. Those permits have already been received. We'll be activating them in segments so that we'll work a few miles at a time. We have to bond each one of those. So we'll work it as it's closed out and we're working others, we'll add a few more into the contractor's hands to keep them moving. But all of that has happened. Dominion has completed their field work and has completed their filing for Powhatan to be included in the filing that went in last week to the State Corporation Commission. They have to get approval from the SCC before they can lease fiber to us. They don't anticipate any issues with that. It's a filing similar to what they've done before. I don't want to speak too much for them, but I anticipate that next year, and it may be late in next year when Dominion builds their piece in, that covers a few little areas in eastern Powhatan for us and ties back to the area that we're building. So we're underway in several different areas there and are making progress, even though the connection's been a little slow to get started. Here are some of the hurdles. We have gotten beyond the environmental reviews for the hut and the route. We have the plans and specs approved. We're waiting for the contract review now. And then the last thing on the private easements, we learned a few things. We've got a contractor with a number of folks that are now working on those. We'll have some additional easements. We have to get along the reconnect route for similar areas and then back into that pink area. Kind of, if I go back here at the start, oops. I think I went, went the wrong way, and I was trying to get back to my map. But probably. So. The kind of pink or salmon-colored area, that area will get designed early next year, and we'll identify the areas where we need the easements as we build along those roadways and also try to get ahead of them so that we don't have the hiccups that we had in that first section up in the green Cartersville Extension area. So have some folks connected, getting more connected, getting ready for the, we're going to end up a total construction of about 250 or 60 miles. We're going to release 93 more miles of that when RUS gives us their contract approval. So that'll be another big stab. We've already built about 20 to 25 miles. So that'll give us about 40% of the total construction in those pieces. Then we'll fill in that other area. Will be most of the rest of that with just a little bit, the little islands out to the east that are connected off Dominion. Dominion's got about 30 miles of construction out of that total 250. So I ran through a lot of numbers, quick snapshot of where we are, and we are making progress both with the USDA grant piece, the state grant piece, and with Dominion and their construction. And time-wise, when we issue the 93 miles out and they put five to eight crews generally, if a crew doesn't get hung up with something unusual, they can build about a mile a week, so underground. So if we have five to eight crews, we'll make five to eight miles. You can do the math when we've got 93 miles for them to do. Somewhere around 18 weeks, if it's five crews, if we can get a few more in, we can get that cut down a little bit. And then it depends on weather, because we'll be working through the winter. Weather can cause problems a little bit with underground, but we've been pretty fortunate so far to keep them moving.
So with that, I'll be glad to take any questions. Questions, board members?
Chairman.
Ms. Carmack?
If you could, I'm sure Mr. Cox and myself are the two that probably get the emails the most frequently. Can you, what I would like is just a realistic timeline, you know, so I don't keep telling these people and they keep emailing me. So if you could, for instance, go back to that map where you have the salmon color, the green color, and the other color. What am I looking at? I mean, are we literally six months for one area?
The green, we're connecting now.
Okay.
And we should finish those connections. As I say, they've released 70 more for construction. We have several of the drop crews here, and then another 50 after that. You're probably talking about the next two months to finish all of those drops.
Okay.
It may be a little earlier, but that's probably a good timeframe to think about the final connections for the people who've signed up in the green area. The purple area is the next one. The first thing they will do is build the backbone along Route 60, and then up 522, they'll go to the hut and then go on up to that bridge at Maidens. Then they will come back and build the laterals. The connections will start when we build the lateral, so that first work, bringing light into the hut, is important, but it doesn't get a lot of folks connected. The total work in the purple area is where I'm saying it'll take, I gave you the number, 18 weeks tonight. That's about four months total for the construction. If you look at splicing and then final connections after that, let's say the six to eight month timeframe, if things work really well. We may get people, the final ones connected by six months. It's more likely that the eight-month period for the purple areas, for the people who sign up in there. Then the pink areas will start under construction as soon as we finish those purple areas. That will have another 120 miles of construction, so you're looking at another six months to seven months of construction. So again, we'll connect people as we build, but if you're looking at when the final ones will get built out, it's probably into early 2025 to get everybody built. Our grant agreement with the state runs through August of 2025, but I don't anticipate that we will be here last out of all of the areas. Once we start in with those underground crews, they'll stay and work in different areas until they're done.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions from the board?
The other thing, we do keep information updated on our website, and we try to keep that as up-to-date as we can. And it shifts in one direction or the other based on actual field conditions. So we would encourage people to look at the Firefly website. At the top of the first page is an area where you can say projects, and you can search your county. And if you put in Powhatan, it has a link just for Powhatan County. And then it lists each of these project areas and a little Chevron or a moving, doesn't move, a little list of arrows under it to show you what stage of construction it's in, and it also gives an estimated date for connections. So.
Mr. Cox, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Wood, first of all, thank you. It's been a long haul for you and for all of us, okay? So we actually have people connected in Powhatan. One of the things that would be useful, just in terms of managing perceptions, is as you hook people up, if we had a counter that said periodically, we've got 300 people. hundred people, now we've got four hundred people, that really shows movement and people like, you know, and uh that helps us, okay?
Okay.
I understand uh twenty twenty-five, um, that's what it is. But uh the last part, of course, is pink and that's the biggest part of the.
Right, yes, and we'll we'll be uh connecting folks in there um and starting in summer, but it'll go into the early part of the next year before we we complete it.
I understand, I'm in pink.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Um, I the one other thing I um I should have come in on earlier, uh, there is a body twenty twenty-four round. We're looking, uh, the FCC has uh their most recent map data shows uh every location that is not claimed to have service by another provider, by Comcast or someone. And there are a handful of areas in Powhatan. Some of those may be small enough, we can just pick them up off of the route if it's close by. Um, if not, we uh anticipate going back and uh adding those in with the next grant request unless you tell me not to. Um, and I don't anticipate coming and asking for a significant contribution from Powhatan um because this is not nearly as many, it's not nearly as big a project, it's just picking up a few individuals that that otherwise don't have service. But uh we can send in a report to the county so you can see what that looks like um as we identify those areas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wood. We appreciate that update.
All right.
And just keep moving as fast as you can.
I will, I will, I will get them a little extra uh boost and tell them, let's get it moving. We we have um uh the R U S approval process, we know takes a little while. And then um finding out about the uh number of easements that we needed, both gave us a little stutter step and I apologize for that, but uh I think we're starting to get to a point where you'll see regular work and um it'll be visible. Hopefully it won't be disruptive on your roadways. Uh, they'll have all the proper flagging and and traffic control, but we'll be here for a little while building. Thank you.
Great, thank you. That'll bring us to our first public comment period. Just a little reminder, on the public comment period this evening, we have uh three public hearings, and if you're looking to speak in regards to one of those three public hearings, you can wait until the public hearing is is brought forward and at that point, your comments will definitely be heard by the board. We have a uh special guest during public comment period this evening. And uh to go through the process, it's a a three-minute conversation for individuals. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you have up to five minutes. Uh, please state your name and your address when you come to the podium. And from that point, I'll turn the initial beginning of the public comment period over to Sheriff Nunley.
Sheriff Nunley, uh thirty-eight eighty old Buckingham. Uh, good evening. Uh, came in this evening to um uh introduce you to Bob Marcellus. Bob Marcellus contacted our office recently, um, an initiative that he was involved in uh to provide uh body armors to civilian first responders in Israel. Um, he had asked for some assistance and it was our pleasure to do so. Uh, and he has since been joined by many counties and the Attorney General's Office, so.
Thank you, Sheriff. Welcome, Mr. Marcellus.
Thank you very much. Um, this is uniquely American. We're in the middle of the agenda and I know you guys had an agenda for tonight, but a citizen like me can speak and it's much appreciated. We've got a lot of friends from Israel actually have tuned in on the live broadcast and tonight's about a message. Um, I'll give you a quick story on what's going on and an update from the Attorney General on the uh the vests. And I'd like to share something here in a few moments um from Israel and just tell you the, so my daughter, I'll start over, my daughter um is practicing Orthodox Jew up in New York. And the other week she was packing a duffel bag to load up to JFK for supplies for the Middle East, for for Israel over there. And she sent me a list and said, Dad, can you help? And the list was included body armor and tactical gear. What does that mean? Because the Israeli army, you know, has is very well equipped. Well, it really was for the civilian first responders and the medics and there's a supply problem over there. They called up about three hundred and twenty thousand reserves to fight terror uh and Hamas and another two hundred thousand former IDF and older people showed up. So we're trying to outfit them. Um, what you're gonna see later on this clip is a video, a sixty-second video from one of the villages in the front lines. Um, and it's a a Virginia lady that called me out of the blue because she saw the NBC story and said, thank you to Virginia, thank you to Powhatan and uh thank you to me. And I said, well, we wanted to do more than just say we have your back, we wanted to do something. What we're fighting is evil. Let me read you something that came from the IDF liaison to me today. They interviewed a couple of the captured Hamas terrorists. At the end of the video, each of the Hamas agents was asked if they, what they did was permissible in Islam. They all answered the same way. They said, no, Islam does not permit the killing of women and children. This is not a political thing. This is pure terror. Hamas has called for jihad in the United States. If good people do not stand and call out evil, bad things happen. And my friends in the Jewish community and a number of them showed up today. I'll point that out in a moment. The Jewish community is reeling. We all, our hearts go out, but everyone here knows somebody that has been killed, kidnapped or is or hurt over there. And what I did not expect was all the publicity with this and the amount of moral morale, it's boosting morale over there to know that they're not alone. That's I wanted to just tell the Jewish community in Israel, they're not alone. And that message can come from a small county like us. And it was just me picking up the phone and calling Brad. Stephen Creasy from Goochlin came over, they loaded my pickup truck. And as I'm doing that, I'm calling Jason Miares, the Attorney General, and saying, Jason, I can, I'll call all the hundred sheriffs, but you could do this a lot quicker. And thank goodness, uh Attorney General Jason Miares put the call out last week to a hundred and twenty-three sheriffs around the state. We're now at four hundred vests going to civilian first responders and the girl who took that video, among other things. And the J- Jason is gonna be sending out a uh request to the rest of the Attorney Generals. Uh, other states are following. And I will note that no taxpayer dollars, including Powhatan, are on this donation because the unique situation with body armor is it expires and they replace it. So there's a life cycle. It is truly surplus. And we've got charities lined up to carry it over if they need, if they can't get it on a State Department flight. I'd also, before, after the video, I would like to make a, read something into the record that I think is important. Um, right now, I would like you guys to turn on the video and like a moment of silence here, and let me preface this real quick. This is the girl that I just met in online, she called to say thank you. So we were talking early in the morning last week and she's in a village surrounded by four Arab villages. Her kibbutz is three hundred soul families, about twelve hundred souls. Most of the men are drafted. The defense is left up to eight soldiers assigned to her kibbutz and women, children and the elderly, and those are the ones that need the vests. The village is surrounded by four Arab villages. Can you imagine getting rocket fire from the YMCA that's over here? Their kibbutz is the size of my hundred acre farm. And you think it can't come here to the United States? You're mistaken. Please play the video and I have a moment of silence, the sounds, hear the sound of the tickets and what should be a nice evening, just like tonight. Go ahead, please. What you just heard was United States taxpayer dollars at work. As she was standing in the kibbutz, those were rockets sent by Hamas and Hezbollah toward her village and our iron gun system knocked them out of the sky. We're blessed to be in this country, Mr. Chairman. And sometimes we have to stand up for evil. I'd like to recognize members of the Jewish community who just came here today to support. We're here. Uh, Reverend uh Ron Wyatt from Graceland Baptist is also here uh as support to pray for everyone. After I conclude, we're gonna let you guys go back to your business and we'll go outside and say a few prayers together. Um, I don't, you know, I I know the agendas and everything have been set for a long time and it's inconvenient, but I'd like to do a personal resolution and ask everyone who can support Israel and fight terrorism to please stand for a moment and tell our friends here that we have their back and we care. And this also, this message is going across to Israel right now and people on the front line. Thank you. Thank you for being. I'll conclude by reading something into the record and Sheriff Natalie has no idea this is coming. But this is how meaningful it is, everyone. Our supplies are going over there through the charity network and the Attorney General's first shipment of four hundred vests that we collected and we're still collecting today are gonna go over tomorrow on a flight or the next day. So this is a letter to read in the record from the member of the Knesset, uh, the Israeli Parliament. And they've got the letterhead and Brett, you have a copy. I'd like to formally give to you, Mr. Chair. Dear Sheriff Nunley, I wish to express my heartfelt appreciation for your invaluable assistance in securing aid and essential equipment for the state of Israel during these challenging times. Your support has been pivotal in ensuring the steady provision of aid and essential equipment, including protective gear and medical supplies significantly enhancing the safety and well-being of our citizens and soldiers. Your dedication to this cause is deeply appreciated and your contributions have made a significant impact on our ability to respond effectively to the current situation. I extend our warmest thanks for you for un- unwavering support. With sincere appreciation, Member of the Knesset, Sharon Haskell. Brad, thanks for helping. Mr. Chair, I would I would say Brad and Stephen Creasy gave me the momentum with the A G and it's gone from there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marcellus. And I want folks to realize that this was out out of context of our normal meeting by virtue of public, but we felt that this was an issue that was extremely important to us, the county, the sheriff, Israel, the Jewish community. Therefore, we went a little bit outside of our perimeters, what we normally do. And I do appreciate you coming down and speaking on behalf, uh, Mr. Marcellus of the of the Jewish community. Thank you for all your efforts and everything you're doing.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity and God bless America and Israel.
There's anyone else that would like to have a public comment period now? Please come forward.
Madam and gentlemen supervisors, my name is Captain Alex Keish Maritime. I'm a proud graduate of the United States Merchant Marine Academy. I'm also a Holocaust survivor and refugee who found refuge in this wonderful country at age five. All of my father's and mother's family were slaughtered in the Holocaust, thirteen brothers and sisters from my father's side, one brother from my mother's side. I stand here today in gratitude and appreciation and in humble thanks to you all for what you've done for uh our entire community. This is not a land situation over in Israel, it's an anti-Jewish situation. I don't like using use, like using the term Semite just because our Arab brothers and sisters also are Semites. Hassan Nazrallah, the head of Hezbollah, stated not too long ago, when asked what he thought of Aliyah, which is the Jewish rite of return to Israel. You become a citizen when you return to Israel. His response was, I wish they all would return, it would save us the trouble of having to hunt them down all over the world. The Jews have been responsible and blamed for the murder of Christ, the Inquisition, the Black Plague, nine eleven and many more horrendous, terrible things. Very happily, we defeated the Nazis in World War Two. Part of that defeat was having to bomb six days of firebombing of Dresden, Germany. Thirty-five thousand or more, up to fifty thousand people died in that conflagration, that horror. It was terrible, so many civilians were killed. Not one community in the world sat and marched against America or against the United Kingdom or against France or the Free Polish Air Force for doing what they had to do to exorcise the Nazi ailment that that was consuming the world. Israel is the only nation on the planet that gets ostracized and damned for protecting themselves and doing what they have to do. I pray for those children and those families that will die in this conflagration, but it's a necessary commitment that we have made as humans to defend Israel and the rights of free people everywhere. Thank you for the minute of time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I am Melissa Crumbine, I'm a member of the Jewish community. I would like to thank Sheriff Nunley and the county of Powhatan for their unwavering support to Israel. Thank you for your donation of tens of thousands of dollars of surplus equipment from the sheriff's office. My son serves as a captain in the IDF. Your donations are personal, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Dot Heffron, and while I'm not a Powhatan resident, I am a neighbor. My family and I live in Chesterfield County. I'm also a member of Congregation Beth Ahaba, where I serve on the Board of Managers. And on behalf of Congregation Beth Ahaba, we want to thank you for your demonstration of support for the people of Israel. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, I'm Reverend Dr. Wyatt from Grayson Baptist Church and just here also thanking you for your willingness to hear this and to show support for people that are in very struggling times right now. And if I may, I just offer prayer right this moment. Father God, I come into your presence asking, Father, for you to touch us. It takes the touch of your hand to change the hate in the midst of human hearts. We come to you as flawed human beings. We have the potential for hate and the potential for love. We're praying for love, for love to come about. That hatred, the cessation of hate would now begin. But Father, we pray for the peace of Israel. We pray for the rights, not only of Israel, but every nation. That nation, every human being, the right to exist. May we stop the hatred and respect life. Father, we also pray for all the innocent lives. It's not just in Israel itself, but all around. There are people being used even by evil today. There are people being used even by evil today as human shields. Protect the innocent, Father, we pray. It will take your divine hand to bring about peace, not only for Israel, but for the world. So touch us, we pray, in the name of our Lord God. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Asher Nayer. I'm an Israeli. And also I'm proud to be also an American citizen. About 50 years, almost exactly to the date when Hamas ventured into Israel to commit such atrocities. I was in the United States 50 years ago then. I entered the university and then I was called back to serve. I was a captain in the armored brigade and fought in the Sina campaign. So it was almost 50 days, I mean 50 years past when Israel again was at risk of a very dangerous war events. And God willing, we have succumbed. Then we will succumb again. So people have asked me many, many times, look, you are a Jew and you're a Semite and the Arabs are also Semitic people. What is the difference between, how could two Semitic tribes commit such atrocity towards another Semitic tribe? And the failure in the West is that people really do not understand the Middle Eastern mentality. The wars in the Middle East that are fought against us, against Jews, and it's going to be fought against non-Jews all around the world in Europe. And eventually it has come to the United States. It's going to be fought over here, but the wars over there is absolute war. There's no negotiation. They want everybody either to conform to their religion or they're going to be dead. And if something's going to happen in generation one, it will happen in future generations. There's no such a thing in their culture and their religion that is going to stop them from trying to Islamize the world. Jews are not the kind of people in our faith that we are external people that we go out to try to Judaism the world. God gave us our land. It's a small piece of land. Every Jew belongs in that land. It's a commandment to be in that land, not to be out of that land and try to make everybody what they're not. So we are the, actually, the light of the nation. So I had been asked many, many times about the differences between Jews and Arabs. And even Jewish people asked me the same question. And it goes to the very basic fabric of what we sanctify. In Judaism, we sanctify life. This is our sanctity. We don't sanctify, the highest sanctity that is, that God gave us is life. This is what we sanctify. And what do the Arabs sanctify? They don't sanctify death. They sanctify honor. So this is a really big difference between sanctifying honor and sanctifying death. And that sanctity of their honor goes even pre-Islamic times. The next question I ask people, would an Arab kill his own daughter over honor? And of course they do and they will. So how could two different Semitic tribes ever come together in any resolution, any peace, any harmony, when one sanctifies life and the one who sanctifies honor, what would they do to non-Jews? What would they do to Christians? What would they do to atheists? You see these brainless idiots in universities running around who most likely, their primary religion today is secular humanism. That's one of the things that Islam hates is people who do not believe in the one God system and they will eventually get rid of them.
Sir?
Yes.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up for us here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Ruby Eisenberg, creditor. I'm from Richmond City. I'm part of the Jewish community. I know your community very well. My patients are in Powhatan. I'm a hospice social worker. I will hopefully speak for Melissa Crumbine also. I'm a mother and a grandmother of children and grandchildren in Israel. I've also lived through with my husband, the Yom Kippur War. We lived in Israel. We were there during one of the Intifadas and we were there two years ago to celebrate with our children, an occasion, and the war broke out. So we have lived through a number of wars there. And I know everyone has read this on Facebook. Golden Meyer has said, peace will come when they love their children more than they hate ours. And she said, I can forgive them killing our sons, but I cannot forgive them making us kill theirs. There is, there's nothing more, more important than family. And there's nothing more ethical and moral than protecting family and children and our elders. I'm a mother. I'm a grandmother. I've taught my children. My daughter who lives there went to the governor's school. And I mean steward school, excuse me, my other daughter, who's in the Navy, went to the governor's school. Morally and ethically, you cannot attribute any of those things who put their children in front of them and shoot when the IDF put the children behind them and shoot. They don't want to kill civilians. But unless we eradicate this evil, I'll be there for more and more. And right now, every time, and we usually have over WhatsApp, we share dinner every night over WhatsApp with my family, my girls and my daughter and son-in-law over WhatsApp. But it's interrupted constantly because they have to go to the bomb shelter. My two-year-old, on a quiet day, when somebody was outside, just using a skateboard, that noise made my two-year-old jump and run into her room. That shouldn't be. Never. That's why you cannot, I don't want innocent Palestinians who had nothing to do with the bombings be hurt. But you cannot let that happen to these two-year-olds who are going to suffer for the rest of their lives. They have to be eradicated. I'm sorry, the water and the electricity. But that water electricity is not just feeding them. That's helping them build their old bombs because they've perfected it. That's how they have thousands coming at my daughter and everybody else's daughter and her son in the IDF. And my girls are going to go into the IDF. So it has to be eradicated. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Be brief. Appreciate your time. I'm Dr. Ken Lipstock and I surgeon in town and president of the Richmond Jewish Alliance. I just want to thank you for recognizing the seriousness of the matter and committing to the ethics. There are so many millions of wonderful Muslims, peace-loving. But unfortunately, a very violent form of Islamism has taken control of the area. And the Jewish people have to dig down deep and rid this from the area. It'll help both the Jews and the Muslims. Just hope they succeed and I appreciate everything you're doing to help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Do we have anyone on Zoom, Mr. Shorten?
No, sir.
Not seeing anyone else come down and no one on Zoom will close the first public comment period. That'll bring us to the consent agenda. And we did move A off of the consent agenda, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion passes.
All right. We just have one appointment up for consideration this evening. This is to our local Board of Building Code Appeals, which also serves our Fire Prevention Code Board of Appeals. The person in this position must be an experienced builder and we have one appointment for your, sorry, one application for your consideration.
It's Mr. Zimmerman. I'll make the motion that we put Mr. Zimmerman on the LBBCA BFPCA for a three-year term, holding the builder position commencing on October 24, 2023, expiring on December 31, 2026. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Bring us to new business. That's where we put the minutes. And they only have one correction to that. It's on page 22 packet. Where it states in the bottom paragraph, Chairman Byerly said he struggles to see how the clearing, the existing structures on the property will only cost 2.4 million. I just want the only removed. I didn't say only cost. And that's the only objection I have to those minutes. If we could correct those, I would be grateful. That would bring us to, next thing on the new business, Brett.
This was a discussion of bylaws. Supervisor Carmack requested the discussion.
Okay. So I understand it's a little late in our term to be discussing bylaws, but I think, given the fact that we could have a completely new board, I would like to amend our bylaws and add some several bylaws in that I think will be beneficial to the next board. We know we're going to have at least two new members. One of them is that board members will be required to use county assigned email while conducting county business. The second one is if a question goes out to the entire board via email, all board members shall be required to respond via email. That way there is a record and everybody knows how your colleagues are voting. Or not voting, it's not a vote, but answering a question. And the bylaws will be reviewed on an annual basis. I understand Mr. Latchney said that technically we can't require a supervisor to use a county assigned email, nor can we require them to answer a question via email. But I don't really understand that is if we can require that they have to send out an agenda item seven days in advance, why can't we require that they do the other thing? You know what I mean? We put a litany of requirements. So why can't we require, if it's in the county bylaws adopted by the supervisors, why couldn't that not be followed?
The agenda is required by state law. There's a state law requirement that agenda be prepared and that it be posted for the public to see. So creating an agenda is mandated by state law. We can therefore create reasonable policies on how that agenda is prepared. So that's because the state law requires an agenda, there's an implicit authority to figure out the methodology that the local board wants to use for getting items on an agenda or getting items off of an agenda.
Wouldn't any sort of FOIA law require that an elected official use their county email?
No, FOIA law doesn't. FOIA law simply says you have to keep your emails, doesn't, it doesn't reference or speak to what kind of an email address you have. Except if you have a Gmail, you got to keep your emails. If you have a county email, you have to keep your emails. The state law just mandates keeping your emails.
The reason I think that this is important is if we get a FOIA request, which is a Freedom of Information Act request, all of our county emails, karmack@powhatanva.gov can be discovered by our IT director. He can go and he can search those emails and submit them. I mean, we could get FOIA requests that we're not even aware of. If somebody's conducting business on a personal email, the onus is on that person, that individual, to provide the emails. So he can pick or choose, or she can pick or choose whatever emails they want to submit. As a courtesy to your colleagues, I think it would be beneficial that we add to the bylaws that it be conducted. I think we could at least put it on there. I'm not saying it would necessarily be followed, but I think that would be something that I would like to pursue as well as the email. If a question goes out even regarding a meeting, you have to answer. And I think that makes it easy for staff. I think it reduces the work on staff. Say, you know, Katie, for example, will send out an email saying, can the board members meet next Wednesday instead of Tuesday? No one knows until an email comes out four days later. You don't know who can meet, who can't meet. It's a simple courtesy and it's a transparency. That's what it boils down to. It's a transparency issue. And I think we were, the big mistake we made was not having our bylaws reviewed on an annual basis. So I would like to make that a motion that we add that to our bylaws.
So the motion is you would like to have the bylaws amended to where they state any supervisor or elected official must use a county authorized distributed email address.
While conducting county business. So it's FOIABLE.
And then the second part is you think, your motion is that you want any email that's sent out with a question, the entire board, that responses must be made via an email.
Correct.
And the third component to this motion is that you would like to have all bylaws, Board of Supervisor bylaws reviewed annually. Is that the motion?
That's it.
Do we have a second to that motion? Mr. Chairman? Point of order? Yes. Blackney, what is the process for amending bylaws?
Well, it takes a supermajority of the board to.
No, but it also requires one month's notice, okay, of the proposals in writing, which has not happened.
Okay. I perceive the motion as the notice because it'll be in the minutes, which would be written. So I just perceived her motion as the notice.
But it has to be done.
It would be on, it wouldn't be on tonight.
It's not tonight.
Right.
No, I'm sorry. That's my confusion. That's correct. Second question, Mr. Blackney, you've said you can't do this. On Tuesday, you said you can't do this and Mrs. Carmack, you want a motion to amend the bylaws where the county attorney says we can't do it.
Correct.
I just want to get that. Okay.
Yeah, I do. And it may not go anywhere. You know, I vote for it. I'm just, it's like I said, for the future.
No, I just wanted, I just wanted to understand.
Yeah.
So we don't need a motion for her to ask for a change in next month, do we? All she has to do is put it in writing?
Well, she could do it that way. She can either get a second on a motion which winds up in writing in the minutes or she could just post it in writing.
Right. The normal procedure would be she needs a second and then. The normal procedure would be she needs a second, and then we can have a conversation about this, correct?
Correct.
I'll second the motion. Now, at that point, if there's any conversation that you'd like to have, and I recognize that Mr. Cox's point of order, therefore, at that point, he has control over the floor. So if, I'll second the motion, therefore, it's put into the writing that you're speaking of, Mr. Latchney, right?
Well, I mean, this will wind up in the minutes.
Correct, which is what enter Mr. Cox's position of, you need 30 days' notice on it, correct?
I'm looking at it now, just to make sure that we're amendments to the bylaws require one month's notice of the proposed amendment in writing to all board members. So I think what Mr. Cox is saying, and I don't disagree, is no matter even how the vote goes, a writing needs to be submitted by Supervisor Karmack
Okay.
to get it on the November agenda.
Okay. Okay. And the, the from this point going forward, Supervisor Karmack needs to write it, and then it's on the November.
It would be an agenda item, and it would take four votes to adopt the amendment. Yes.
Correct. Any other questions, comments?
Yes, Mr. Byerly. Do we need, I mean, this motion is moot, is it not?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not going to vote. We're not, but we're moving forward. You would need to put that in writing.
Yep.
That issue's closed. For now.
And family divisions, family subdivisions, Supervisor Karmack also requested discussion.
So one thing that I've realized is we have the majority of the development in the county is one unit per 10 acres. I would like to ask you all, my colleagues, as well as the Planning Commission potentially, to revise the family division. Again, I know we looked at it one time, but perhaps in a way or in an effort to allow for some more, I hate to use this word, affordable housing on a smaller lot, which we cannot allow any other way. It would, we would have a little more variability with parents who want to allow their children to move here or vice versa, children who want parents on their property. Right now, we have, I think, an A10, an eight-acre minimum with two acres being the cutoff, where you can lob off two acres. One thing I think we could look at is maybe reducing that minimum from eight acres. I don't know if we should reduce it to six. I don't know if we should reduce it to five. And then maybe have one access point road, because that's one concern that we do have as a board, is creating more basically drives on thoroughfares. So we could reduce the amount of acreage from eight to six, five. I'm just open to anything. I think it's something that I would like the Planning Commission to look at, because people are really, really, we're very, very limited with any kind of smaller lot development. It's not the end-all, the be-all, but it's, it's one way that we could possibly accomplish it, especially for young families and, you know, possibly people that want their parents, you know, elderly parents to come and take care of them. And I know we have the accessory dwelling. That's not the same thing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cox.
I think Mrs. Karmack's finished. I have Mr. Blackney. I could think we today can have a three-acre family division. It has to have a five-acre residual.
Right.
In ag zoning, it's a three-acre minimum, five-acre residual. In R2 and RU, it's a two and two.
So
So eight acre total.
Right, but if you have to have at least eight acres to be able to do a family division, okay?
That's what I'm suggesting. We maybe reduce the eight acre to less. You see what I'm saying? We take that to six acres or five acres and then have
I guess my question would be, and I just, I don't know, is would this move the needle at all? I don't know whether, you know,
I don't know.
To send it to the Planning Commission, I'd like to have some, I mean, if, if it had the potential for some significant impact, it would be interesting to explore. It really would. But I don't know how to get a handle on it. We've got so much stuff going at the Planning Commission. That's, that's
We do. But I figured one thing about it, this board, we understand this. We, we get family divisions, we get subdivision ordinances. You know, a new board may not quite understand all the nuances, so if we can clean some of these things up.
But it won't happen before there's a new board. I'm just, yeah. Mr. Can I ask Mr. Blackney a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cox.
What do you, we went through this. We've had some litigation on it, have we not?
Not on this issue.
Not on this.
Not on this issue.
So we're okay on this one, okay? Do you see any, any problems or opportunities?
Just history, so everybody, maybe. We originally had two and two, so all you needed was four acres in an ag zoning to do family division. And the Planning Commission looked at it a couple of years ago. And the other thing we had was a 10-year holding period, so you couldn't do a family division until you'd owned the property for 10 years. So the Planning Commission came up with what they viewed as a compromise solution. The 10 years was reduced to five, so you didn't have to hold it as long before you could family divide. But they wanted to get the lots a little closer to conforming lots, so they raised the two to three-acre minimum with a residue of five. So at the Planning Commission level, which forwarded this to you guys, that was, that was sort of the compromise trade-off, is we'll cut the 10 years to five, so people can do it sooner, but we'll increase the acreage slightly, so that we're not creating as many non-conforming two-acre lots as we had been in the past. So that, I'm not commenting if that was the right approach or wrong approach. I'm just saying that was the, the approach we took a couple of years ago.
I would say, from, 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 from my, my perspective on this, I agree with exactly what Mr. Latchney said and his assessment of how this all came together. I know I've had, I can't say I've had an abundance of calls, but I have had calls in District Three from, from people that own property and sort of the reverse of what Ms. Karmack said, that is an elderly couple who they don't want to go through the transition of moving, but they would like to cut off a piece of their acreage for their children to move in, to assist taking care of them. And it is a tough, tough, tough choice here in regards to this. Because I know, I understand what the, the motivation was as we initially changed it to a total of eight acres. I mean, a person had to own eight acres, and now the way the ordinance is, is you own the eight acres and you have to have owned it for five years. The five-year offset going from the four acres up to the eight a little bit, to make it a little bit more flexible for different people. My perspective on it, and this is a true story. An elderly couple, they're looking to put their, put their, their children into, or their son and, and his wife into it, and they own seven and a half acres. That's a tough, tough, tough decision. And I mean, we get up here to make these tough decisions. Don't get me wrong. I get that. But I think that, and I'm not sure, as Mr. Cox says, I'm not sure it moves the needle. But from my perspective, I would like to at least send it back to the Planning Commission to let them review it again, to see if there's some opportunities that can be created as housing values go up tremendously everywhere, and it's not limited to Powhatan County by any means, but to find a way that, you know, parents who their kids have been here their whole life can afford an opportunity to be in this county where they grew up, where they love the lifestyle that we all do here. That's, that's what my perspective of it would be, is, is I do think it's a fair thing to send it back to the Planning Commission. Let them review it. And if you want to put a time limit on the Planning Commission, I think you can put a 30-day limit on it.
Well, state law is in 60.
Okay, so they have 60 days. So that would put them in a, in a timeframe of being pretty close to the, the December meeting. And see how that flows. And if it doesn't flow in the timeframe of the 60 days, then it moves to the next board. But at least the next board, whoever they are, can begin to look at this a little bit and do a little research, because it is a big issue in regards to the county. That's where I stand on it. I, I think it's worthwhile. It doesn't cost us anything to send it back to the Planning Commission. Let them look at it and see where we go from there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Cox.
Don't disagree at all with anything you've said. What I would like you to think about, though, is just, just go back to the situation that you just described. The other alternative there is a, a second dwelling on the same site, okay? That they can do by right. There are limitations on the size of that second dwelling. So if the intent really is to get at the situation you were just talking about, I would like to have the Planning Commission look at the size of the second dwelling in addition to this, so that if you're going to create more options, here's another option. So
Great, great suggestion. So don't, don't disagree with that suggestion at all, because it does exactly that. Let's put as many options out there as we can. I, I agree with you. Thank you for bringing that point up.
And I would point out, by way of reminder, up until two years ago, a little less than two years ago, you could come up with any size you wanted. You just had to come before the board and get approval. And we took that right out, but we did. That was actually how our ordinance was written up until a couple of years ago.
I'll be honest with you, you know, part of it that gets there with me is, you know, government just keep getting involved more and more and more and telling you how this is going to be and how that's going to be. I, I'm in favor of moving back to the Planning Commission, explore Mr. Cox's option of, you know, the, the size of the dwelling, the accessory dwelling.
What Mr. Blackney just said.
Yeah, exactly.
Perfect example.
So we're all in agreement of that, or at least we have the majority agreement with that. Brett, we take that back to those guys and let them look at it. Put a 60-day time on it, and, and we're good. Cirillo just fell over.
All you have to do is go look at the language we had two years ago. You don't have to make anything new. It's, it was all there two years ago.
Our first public hearing this evening, again, as we amended the agenda, we'll actually do the rezoning first, and then there's a CUP that relates to it. But this is 23-10 REZC for the mill, and Mr. Sean Clendenin from our Planning Department will present on this.
Good evening. This is a rezoning case for Timothy and Lisa Benusa, who operate the mill at the intersection of Robert E. Lee Road and just north of Huguenot Trail. And They are currently zoned agricultural 10, and they're looking to rezone to crossroads as it aligns closer with their current use. The two parcels, which are 1830A and 1831, are designated as crossroads according to the Powhatan County's Future Land Use Map. They are not rezoning to change use, however, they have proffered out many uses from crossroads that they believe do not align with the character of the area. I would also like to add, at the neighborhood meeting, residents spoke very positively of the Benuses and, and how they've managed their property. The applicants are here tonight and would like to say something, and I'm also happy to take any questions.
Yeah, like to come up?
Lisa Benusa, 2430 Robert E. Lee Road. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. 20 years ago, well, actually 22, my family came before this board requesting a CUP to create an event venue. While the process was turbulent and very painful for everyone, it was passed. We began our journey to create what is now seen as an asset to this county. We have enjoyed continued thoughtful growth over the last 20-plus years. Every step of that growth, we have closely worked with our neighbors as well as this county. We now employ over 65 people, with a large majority being Powhatan residents. I speak tonight to emphasize that when you, as a board, have to balance growth as well as keeping our rural way of living, you do so hopefully with businesses like ours as an example of how to achieve this. From early on in our history, this same struggle has been fought. If we look at the history of rural living, local amenities have always coexisted with residents: small shops, taverns, post office, gas stations, auction, auction houses, people living above their businesses, the list goes on. We feel that the crossroads designation strives to continue this tradition. We have made sure, again, that this plan to rezone to crossroads has the blessing of all of our neighbors. We will continue to strive for excellence as our next generation moves forward towards the future. They can be assured with this rezoning that the county embraces all of our achievements, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else would like to speak on this rezoning case?
Hello, my name is
We will open the public hearing now.
Oh.
No, you're, you're fine. It's open for the public to comment now.
Hello, my name is Carl Schwenderman. I would like to support this development. Could they ask them to give some right-of-way along Huguenot Road to VDOT for, if they want, like, you know, like five or six, like, you know, six to 10 feet of right-of-way along the property to VDOT to add shoulders to Huguenot Road in the future, or relocate the ditches along Huguenot Road? I mean, they wouldn't have to build anything, but I mean, just like ask them to donate some right-of-way for VDOT to add shoulders and relocate the ditches along Huguenot Road.
Oh, good. Oh, good.
Thank you.
Steve Barham, 3492 Richards Run, Powhatan, Virginia, District Three. Oh. I've known the Benusas over 30 years. My parents supported them years ago when they started on this quest. They've always done a good job. The one thing they've done, they've got the support of the community around them. They're telling people what they're going to do, and that's the way rezoning should be done. So please support the Benusas on this and the family. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sam Epps, 2049, Shatter Creek Drive, District One. I actually was and came before the board 20 years ago when Lisa first started her adventure. I live on 7-Eleven. I'm up and down it every day. And 20 years ago, when she was working on her project, the biggest concern was traffic. The amazing thing is no one has noticed, especially me, as many times I'm up down that road, any kind of congestion, buses, that was a big issue. I've seen none. I was also before the board on a second adventure that Lisa did further out on 7-Eleven. That passed. I can tell you, I've been to her establishment many times, and it is just phenomenal what that family has done. They have not made a huge impact on our area. They run a very straightforward and very clean environment there. I think her type business is more we need in Powhatan County. So I'm speaking on asking this board to approve her rezoning, and I can assure you rezoning, and I can assure you, she'll do the same thing she's done for over twenty years in this county. Make it better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No, sir. At this point, we'll close public comment period. This is in District Three. So I will make the motion in accordance with Section eighty-three dash one, two, three, F four of the Powhatan County zoning ordinance and public necessity, convenience, general welfare, good zoning practice. The Board of Supervisors approves of the requested, so the request submitted by Timothy and Lisa Benusa on tax map eighteen dash three, one, and eighteen, three, zero, dash, A, twenty-four thirty, Robert E. Lee Road, and twenty-four thirty-four, Robert E. Lee Road, subject to the conditions presented in this report. Sorry, can I get a second?
Second.
Open for comments, discussion, questions, debate. Go. I'll echo what one of the speakers said. I don't know my exact years, but I do know Ms. Benusa for quite some time. I'm going to guess and say pretty close to twenty-five to thirty years. Having owned a business in this county, I didn't have to jump through the hoops that I think the Benusa family did, but I understand the reasoning for jumping through the hoops. The caution that when you sit up here, you have to have, because you're always thinking about the betterment of the county and the safety of the citizens. That's the things that, when you factor in, you, you get to make these decisions as elected officials that are not always the easy decisions. Maybe in a lot of people's eyes, not always the right decision. But it's extremely encouraging for me personally to see someone that comes in and they have the vision to see where they want to go, how they want to get there, and then they execute the plan. The Benusas have done that with the mill, the brewery. It's an old saying, you can't, you can't hit the ball if you don't swing the bat. You don't get the opportunity to swing the bat, you're not going to hit the ball. I'm very proud to say that they're a business in this county. Very proud. I'm very proud this county has them as a business. At that point, we can do a roll call vote and move along here. Mr. Shorty?
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. McClung?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye.
Then the next case is twenty-three dash oh-two CUP from the Benusas, an amendment of conditions related to their CUP. And again, Mr. Sean Clinton will give us the summary of this case.
Yes, so Timothy and Lisa Benusa are seeking an amendment to the proffers associated with previously approved conditional use permit on tax map eighteen dash thirty A. They intend on maintaining the current use of the property, however, they wish to alter some of the restrictions from the previous conditional use permit. The changes, as we see, do not harm the health, safety, or general welfare of Powhatan County, and therefore, staff and planning commission recommend approval for the amendment.
Does the applicant have anything to comment on? We'll open up the public hearing. Anyone from the public who would like to come and speak on this issue of the conditional use permit, the floor is open. Is anyone on Zoom?
No, sir.
Dan Jones, thirty-nine oh-one, Old River Trail. I had not planned to speak tonight, but I have such fondness for Tim and Lisa Benusa and what they have accomplished. There's a book published few years ago by Richard Florida called The Creative Class. And in that, he mentions that about thirty percent of wealth and income is generated by those in the creative class. And I can't think of finer examples of that sort of, of individual than Tim and Lisa. What they have done there, I think, is just incredible. And it has brought recognition to Powhatan County from throughout the region and the state and beyond. So yeah, that's just a prime example of what people with energy and vision and drive locally can accomplish. And what they've accomplished there is just, is, is, is a jewel for this county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Not seeing anyone else, we'll close the public hearing. I'll make a motion in accordance with Section eighty-three dash one, two, three, F four of the Powhatan County zoning ordinance and public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice. The Board of Supervisors approves of the request submitted by Timothy and Lisa Benusa on tax map eighteen dash three, zero, A, twenty-four thirty-four, Robert E. Lee Road, subject to the conditions presented in this report. Your second. Any comments, questions? Debates, conversation? Ditto to my last comments. A roll call, Mr. Shorty?
Mr. Williams? Mr. McClung?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye.
Uh, that moves us to our last public hearing, public hearing of the evening ordinance, oh, twenty-twenty-three dash thirteen. This is rezoning case twenty-three dash twelve, Spring Branch LLC. Uh, and our planning director, Mr. Mike Cirillo, will present on this.
Thank you, and good evening. I had to fight with Sean over this, but I took this case. Before us is an application for rezoning and map amendment of thirty-six point eight-four acres along US sixty. The request is to rezone the property from A-ten, agricultural ten, to Commerce Center. The property is located on the westbound side of Anderson Highway, on the northeast corner of Anderson Highway and Branch Forest Way. The county's twenty-twenty-one comprehensive plan designates the subject property as Gateway Business in the Courthouse Village Special Planning District. As a reminder, I put up there, the purpose of the Commerce Center District is to accommodate a wide range of retail service, office, and institutional uses. The design standards that we have, ensure the development are pedestrian-friendly and relate to street, to the street are compatible with surrounding development. The Gateway Business District, for the most part, reiterates the, the zoning district language, although it gives you additional information about the layout, the preferred layout for this, for this area. Now, I mean, as you can see, and I think as, as we've seen demonstrated by the Benusas, design is kind of everything in these projects. So the example above shows parking separated and divided into smaller areas. Buildings are oriented to the street. You've got connectivity to adjacent parcels and so forth. The buildings are of a pedestrian scale, for example. There are parks which are accessible. I know we hear a lot from one of our residents about trails and sidewalks, and there is an opportunity to incorporate that soon. So that is also part of this, potentially part of this future. I looked at some examples that, you know, I think, I think when I'm hearing people say this is an example of what could be, so this is, uh, these are, this is a development in, in a rural area. You've got assisted living, you've got a small town center, you've got housing that's fairly close together, public parks, really everything that we've just, that's described in both the Gateway District and the Commerce Center language. Um, and you can see that what they've done is they've protected a buffer along this US highway that continues to contribute to the rural character of this county. Um, and here's an example of this assisted living area with public spaces that are available to the public. And then these are actually places for people who want to live independently, but want to be close to health services that are also located in this area. And then here's another example, again, primarily showing this to show that the buffers along this US highway help to reinforce the, you know, what people want when they're talking about wanting a rural character to be maintained. And yet you go inside and you have what is essentially Mayberry in the core, along with fairly dense housing, which is quite expensive, in, in fact, in this example. But this is an example of some places that I know of that I think is where Gateway District and Commerce Center were, maybe what we're thinking about. So the site that they've proposed is shown here. This is the concept plan. My problem with this plan is that there is not the con, the, the Commerce Center and the Gateway areas both are looking for connectivity and integration with the adjacent parcels. Now, in response to neighborhood concerns, the developer is proposing to not provide that. But it is inconsistent with the, with the comprehensive plan and with the intent of the Gateway District for this location. The other thing that I think is a missing opportunity potentially, but again, in response to neighborhood concerns, is, you know, potent, the potential for a trail using the riparian corridors and the buffers. We're going to be looking at a county-wide trail plan soon, and one of the opportunities we have would be to connect neighborhoods and commercial areas, not only by road, which cause congestion or contribute to congestion, but giving people who live in residential areas the option of getting from point A to point B without getting in a car and driving. So that, that's another weakness, I think, of this concept plan. But I do feel as the, the ordinance that we have, the way the ordinance is written, and the guidance from the comprehensive plan can yield a better product, which is what I'm hoping for. There were comments that were received from soil erosion and stormwater. This is from our environmental planner and DEQ. Some of you may be aware that the state rules and regulations regarding stormwater, that the amount of water that can leave a site cannot exceed what is currently leaving the site. It's probably the easiest way to describe that. We have comments from DOT, another developer spoke to that. We have VDOT here to answer questions. For utilities, the comment that we got from our interim utility department was that it's located in the Wastin, Wastewater Service District at the Powhatan County Water and Sanitary Sewer Man's Cross in front of the parcel, and the proposed buildings would be required to connect to the county's utilities per the county's ordinance. And this was initially their only comment. We went back and got additional information from the interim person filling that role, and he shared with us the exact language from the ordinance. That was Section eighty dash one, twelve. That says, basically outlines what the developer, or any developers, required to submit for review. They would have to agree at that time to, to connect to our, to our system. A question that was raised, which is a good one, is when the, when the developer develops their site, should they be only developing, or should they only be building a sewer system that's your sewer water system that serves their site only? What sort of plans do we have for adjacent parcels, development that might go adjacent to it? Because if, if the plans that they have, for example, are, let's say, they come in with stage one, phase one, and, and the requirement is for a ten-inch pipe. Now, when they come back, they may have to upgrade it to a twelve-inch pipe. And so the advice is that they work with the public utilities department so that they're not having to, they maximize the size of the pipe that goes out there for their development upfront, rather than doing it piecemeal. If they, if, if they were to do it, and then they, they were to do the maximum amount, say it was a ten, ten-inch pipe, if they came back and they, we required them to expand it, and it wasn't required by the development on the site to, let's say, a twelve-inch, then the county would be responsible for reimbursing them for the difference in the cost. So, but I think with a development like this, I think it would be wise to, to expand to the maximum in that case. I think this would be the time for pressing for me, and then I've got VDOT here and the developer to also speak on these issues.
Any questions for Mr. Cirillo? I'm going to have some later on, but after the. We can bring him back. After we've heard from them. Okay. VDOT applicant?
Good evening. Madam, excuse me, Mr. Chairman and fellow Board of Supervisors members, my name is Bill Melton. I am the representative for the property owners, Spring Branch LLC. One of the owners is in the audience tonight, and just for the record, I am not a property owner of that parcel, just so we set the record straight. I do have Chris Schuss with me, an engineer with Balzer, and Eric Strohacker, traffic engineer that we've hired for Greenlight Solutions. They're both here to assist and answer any questions as you may have. I want to thank the staff, all the hard work they put into this case over the past months or so. I want to thank the planning commission members who asked questions and responded, and then made their subsequent vote, four votes for and one vote against for the project. Perfect. Thank you, Chris. Here's the location of the property currently, the intersection of Route sixty and Branch Forest Way. Just want to provide you a little bit of history there. This, many moons ago, when the county was a little more rule, if you want to use that term, we used to hold turkey shoots on this property many times, and some people probably remember those. In the mid nineteen nineties, Mr. Donald C. May granted the right-of-way to the county, to the county that run water and sewer across Spring Branch property to the Academy Road Food Lion Development. Around the same time, he provided the right-of-way to Goodwin LLC to build Branch Forest Way Road, allowing the required second entrance to Branch Way Spring subdivision. In two thousand and five, the May estate sold the property. The developer began developing the property under the RC Residential Commercial Zoning District. At the time, the commercial entrance was approved and constructed. East and westbound turn lanes were approved and constructed. Internal roads were constructed and accepted, accepted by VDOT. Water and sewer added to the specific sites. Kerbin gutter was constructed around two pad sites. Total infrastructure investment between the above was about one point five million dollars, not including the land. In two thousand and seven, Ray Clay LLC purchased a five-point-two acre pad and constructed what is now Midlothian Family Practice Office Building. The property is assessed for tax purposes at two-point-five million dollars. During the time between two thousand and seven and two thousand and eleven, the developer created plans and submitted proposals to the county. These plans included a small amount of retail business, most along US sixty, and the majority of the parcel and housing. Subsequently, those plans never passed the planning commission nor the Board of Supervisors because of the large housing. In two thousand and twelve, the May estate took the parcel back from the developer for various reasons. Just as a note, they paid the back taxes at that time of sixty-five thousand dollars. Over the past ten years, the May Trust has listed the property for sale for several different large commercial companies. Over the years, there have been lots of interest on the parcel and even contracts offered. Unfortunately, the purchasers became frustrated in the rezoning process, and with three, their offer, they just lost interest in the parcel. Two thousand and nineteen, the Board of Supervisors eliminated the five-hundred-foot RC zoning along US Route sixty. All the properties on Route sixty that were not developed were rezoned to A-ten. That is what took place on this property. In January twenty-twenty-three, I had a meeting with county staff to discuss this parcel. During the conversation with staff, we used the updated two thousand and twenty-one adopted comprehensive plan and the updated land use map plan, which delineated the parcel as gateway business for future development. During this conversation, I was told the correct zoning classification of the parcel During this conversation, I was told the correct zoning classification of the parcel would be Commerce Center. After speaking with the owners, we decided we would apply for rezoning on the property to be in conformity with the comprehensive plan and future land use map plan and use the Commerce Center zoning classification that was recommended by staff. In mid February, I had another meeting with the then planning director and the assistant county administrator, who happens to be the now now the county administrator. In this meeting, I was encouraged to remove some of the approved uses allowed in CC zoning. I was also encouraged to provide a conceptual plan to demonstrate how a parcel could be laid out. I asked Balzer and Associates to help with this project. The uses that we chose for the layout were from a list of past interested parties of the property, recent calls and suggestions from staff on who was inquiring about development in the county. March twenty twenty three, had a pre-meeting with the planning director and left with the checklist of items needed when submitting a completed application. In April twenty three, went to town to turn went to turn in the completed application and was told it was incomplete as a result of no traffic information being provided. I was told that I didn't need that by the current planning director as a result of the existing turn lanes and commercial entrances. We basically said, okay, and we hired a traffic engineer consultant to provide the necessary data. The completed application was filed in July of two thousand and twenty three. The purpose of all this history of the property was not to bore you, but to point out that for over fifteen years, the property has been sitting with one point five million dollars of infrastructure investment and a two point five million dollar personal services property on US Route sixty. Let's remember that in gateway business, there is no housing allowed. That was removed also in two thousand and nineteen, excuse me, two thousand and twenty one, when the updated comprehensive plan map came out. The repairing buffer was put in as a request by Mr. Cox and several neighbors in the area. So those are some of the changes that have taken place over the years. So I'm going to let Chris take the technical part of this from here. Thank you, Chris.
For the record, my name is Chris Schust. I'm with Balzer and Associates, also Powhatan County resident. I live at three ninety five Mill Station Drive. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I thank you for your time, as in addition to what Bill had said. I'm going to pick up where he left off and talk a little bit about some of the technical sides of the project and things moving forward. The this is a current map showing the the zonings of the parcels around the property as they stand today. And this is the two thousand and twenty one countywide future land use plan. As you can see, in the northwest corner of the property, there's a dark green band that transects the property that is identified as natural conservation. In addition, just to the north of that is a light green band. That is a designated as a rural area on the future land use plan. While we are moving forward with the proposal to zone this property as CC Commerce Center to avoid any split zoning lots, the entire parcel is going to be zoned CC. But what we have done is, if you take a look in the upper left corner there, the northwest corner of this parcel, we are opting to put the entirety of the natural conservation area and the area designated as rural conservation or is a rural area into a conservation easement. The conservation easement is intended to be in perpetuity. And the conservation has a special designation that there shall be no vehicular or pedestrian crossings through that area. That was part of what came out of the the community meeting was that there was a desire to have no connectivity to the neighborhood, to the north and west. And so out of respect to the natural area that is there and the not getting any construction into that area and to provide a adequate buffer through there and then more than adequate, actually, we're going to go ahead and proceed. The proposal is to put that into a conservation easement. In addition to the natural conservation easement that is part of the proposal, part of the as part of the community meeting, the areas to the northeast, the upper right hand side, we had conversation with the neighbors that live on that side of the parcel. Their concern was the the ordinance width of the buffer and was that, in fact, adequate to provide buffering from residential uses that are there? I'll show you another map in a few minutes to give you the proximity of the homes relative to the property lines. As a result of that, the owners have agreed to increase the buffers over the county stated requirement to be sixty feet in width. So I think that is a demonstration of an attempt by the owners to ensure that they're being good neighbors with those residents. Looking at another aspect of the property at the community meeting, it was discussed pretty heavily, the proposed connection that Mike brought up to the to Branch Forest Way. As you look at the property, the dark magenta strip on the left side that parallels the road, we have proposed to enhance the buffer on that side as well, the fifty feet. And in conjunction with the natural conservation area on the top, we're providing adequate screening really all the way around to the neighborhood. Now, talking to a point that Mike made about the in one of his exhibits that has the the buffering along the the major arterial, there is a another drainage way in the southwest corner of the project. And it is not noted as natural conservation on the future land use plan. But because we notice there, we are going to, we are showing that that entire area being placed in a buffer to protect it. And then we also, along the front of Route sixty, show that the the code buffer projects along the frontage the rest of the way. Now, in addition to having buffers adequately surrounding the property, we also have recognized that good planning really warrants, even in commercial areas, some open spaces. There's quite a bit of open space being proffered here, but in addition to the buffers and natural conservation, we're also showing an amenity space in that southeast corner that can be utilized by the people that work in this development, people that shop or patronize this development. And I think that that's going to be viewed as an amenity space as we go forward for the development. Really, ultimately, I think it could be an amenity space for the community as well as a large. And then finally, on the the left side, between the buffer along Branch Forest Way and the development itself is the area planned for stormwater management. And the stormwater management facility is placed generally the low side of the parcel to to put it in the correct location. Water wants to flow downhill, so we have the basin on the lower side. And that further adds buffering space from Branch Forest Way. In the planning commission, the commissioners requested that I read through all of the excluded uses that we have proffered. I'm happy to do that. I'm also happy to accept that you all have seen this already and go keep moving forward. But this is the list of uses that we have proffered out per section eighty three two forty one, the permitted uses you can see over on the right hand side, eighty three two forty to the conditional uses and then the accessory uses down at the bottom. The these uses that have been proffered out are a combination of uses that the owner just felt didn't really fit within gateway business or the CC zoning and then feedback from the community meeting with uses that that we felt heard what the residents were saying and added some more uses to the list to be proffered out. In addition, we have also proffered what I went through on the plan, the fifty foot buffer along the western property property line, the sixty foot buffer along the northeast side, the stream protection buffer and the included language that stipulates that the exact location design and specs for these buffer areas shall be reviewed at the time of site plan. And then we've also proffered the protection of the natural conservation area. That's all. That's pretty consistent with any project that comes forward now for the natural conservation area. Moving on to transportation, this was one that has changed as the the project has moved forward through the process. We do have a transportation proffer related to transportation studies. And that says that in conjunction with each site plan submitted, the trip generation information shall be provided with the plan. That was the extent of what we got to with the planning commission, but through additional conversations with planning and residents of the community and our traffic consultant and VDOT has participated pretty heavily in this. We have enhanced that transportation proffer to include a process that goes from trip generation to signal warrant analysis to signal justification. And I know you've seen it, so I don't need to read through the details, but I just wanted to point out that that was a collective effort to get to the point where we've gotten to. In addition, we've continued our transportation proffers to look at improvements that can be made to help facilitate safety and access for the proposed development. There is an existing left in turn lane from eastbound Route sixty. And in conversation with VDOT early on, they made a comment that that turn rate lane really isn't to VDOT standards today's standards. So the owners agreed to proffer extending that turn lane to comply with VDOT's current standards of two hundred foot stacking, two hundred feet of taper. And then additionally, our plan shows a new right in, right out access point on Route sixty. That was originally the access point we had on Branch Forest Way, moving it to Route sixty. We're also proffering a right turn lane for that access again to comply with VDOT standards. And then we've shown that we're offering a phasing plan, which says that prior to any site plan approval, we shall have a phasing plan in place for the road improvements. That's just to offer a little bit of flexibility. If a, you know, small user comes in as a first plan, it may not necessarily trigger the need for certain improvements. Those that will be items that are intended to be coordinated with the the planning department and VDOT at the time of site plan. And it's something that I personally have experienced and gone through that process many times with VDOT and had them chime in on the phasing plan, what they do and don't like. We also are proffering that there shall be no direct pedestrian or vehicle access to Branch Forest Way. Again, I've stated it, but this is in response to the the community and that they do not want that cross connectivity. And finally, because we heard concerns over erosion control early on and protecting the watershed, DEQ already has enhanced standards in place from a stormwater runoff perspective. You've probably heard before the energy balance method that is a approach treating the one year storm runoff. In addition to the standard two and ten year storms, studies had proven that the one year storms were the highly erosive storms that then allowed the two and ten year storms to further degrade receiving channels. We have a requirement to comply with that energy balance approach. But in in addition to that, we have erosion control during construction and those in between times that we have a responsibility by state code to comply with. The owners agreed to offer an increase in capacity of sediment basins and sediment traps that will be used, increase that capacity twenty five percent. The benefit of doing that is that it will allow the water running off from the construction site to have additional time to let sediment filter out before it leaves the site. And so with those items in in mind, I've gone through and kind of talked about some of the site characteristics, the proffers. And I think we're we're happy to to turn it back over to you, Mr. Byerly, and say, we again, we appreciate your time tonight and we appreciate staff and the community's help with this project.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing with this rezoning. Anyone for the public that would like to speak, the floor is open. State your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Carl Schwendeman of seventeen twenty seven Teresa Lane. I would like to ask the Powhatan Board of Supervisors to ask the developer to build either a five foot sidewalk or a ten foot wide multi-use trail from Branchway Forest Road to the end of the development or possibly to even the food line by Academy Road. Because in the in the zoning case, they've mentioned ten or twenty, ten or twelve times that it's supposed to be pedestrian connected, pedestrian friendly and have pedestrian connections. And the best way to do that would be to build, ask them to build a sidewalk along the water main. There's a water main and what there's a water main and power line easement that share the same path that's free of trees that runs through the buffer. And if they put the if they put that trail, if they put the trail in there and turn it over to VDOT, VDOT would take over the maintenance of the trail. And by having the developer build it, you would save, let's say, Powhatan County thousands in the future, millions in the future, because the developer can build it cheap, far cheaper than Powhatan can, because they'd be building it at the same time that the parking lots, the building foundations, they're digging up water mains and cutting trees and doing grading. And by building the trail at the same time, it would save, it would save people thirty or forty years in the future, a retrofit. And on top of that, if you get if you get seventeen, if you get like fifteen hundred feet of trail from this development, you can use that trail section for a federal grant, which can bring back four to five times as many feet or miles of trail. And that this is an, this is a once in a lifetime opportunity to help to help a trail get a foothold on Route sixty in a big way. And also, there are a lot of people that walk along Route sixty and ride bikes along Route sixty. And a lot of times they'll do it at night or they'll come in the middle of the day and you'll see cars trying to swerve around people on bikes going down the side of the road. And if you put a trail in this section, you'll be able to have signs on Route sixty that keep people off of Route sixty and tell them to use the new trail. But it'll also connect other developments to it in the future because up the road at the intersection of Mann Road and Route sixty is a massive hotel proposal that has over twenty two hundred feet of frontage on on Route sixty and the new trail at the Branchway Development could link up to it because it's only a mile away. And then it could connect to the village sidewalks. And if the trail goes to Food Lion, the village sidewalks can come out down old Buckingham Road and meet them up and meet up at Academy Road, you know, create a giant beltway around Powhatan County.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Byerly, members of the boards, good to see everyone again. Don Rissmeyer, thirty five twenty three Richards Run. I was hoping to get five minutes, but I'm going to talk really quickly. I've been
You're going to get five minutes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Byerly. We have been working with the applicant since early August and I can tell you that of the ninety homes in the Branchway Forest subdivision, including the folks that have built between this property and the original subdivision, they're all lot, large lot wooded. We do not want pedestrian connections because basically people walk on Branch Forest Way. Vehicular connections, people are going to get hit by cars if there's a sidewalk where people were to come out of, say, a Alzheimer's unit and walk onto Branch Forest Way, it would be extremely unsafe. We have speeding traffic. We have cut through traffic on Branch Forest Way that cuts through to Blessed Sacrament on Academy Road. And we've been really struggling to figure out a way to avoid a really unfortunate accident with one of our children or one of our families. So we really appreciate the fact the developer has taken out the pedestrian and vehicular connections. We worked with VDOT last week, or I personally was involved in many emails with VDOT about the traffic signals. The one thing that's missing from the traffic signal proffer is who's going to design and build it. And the way things work with VDOT is they have a six year capital improvement plan. So if the developer does the engineering studies, which is a smaller cost and decides that a signal is warranted, I don't believe there's a way to get a traffic signal from VDOT in less than six years. So I would ask the So I would ask the board to take that up with VDOT. I did send that in an email and received no response about a week, week and a half ago. But that is new proffer, that I was trying to get clarification that if we decided it was actually required for the four or 5,000 vehicles per day that this is going to generate, because it's more than twice the size of the Food Lion Shopping Center. It's a huge commercial development they're proposing. And in, in the end, the environmental impacts have been mostly addressed. I do want to say that putting a trail in the deer run is a really bad idea, because the people behind my house have a deer stand and I hear them in the morning. So I would strongly caution you not to put a public trail in the creek bed, because they shoot deer back there. They also feed in my garden, in my backyard, the deer. So I don't think they're going anywhere. I would suggest not putting a public trail in the creek bed. But other than that, no concerns about environmental, unless anyone's here from the Lake Association who's concerned about the lake and the impacts on the lake, which is filling up with sediment as we speak. Really, the last issue to speak to is the, the permitted uses. This is something Steve Barron brought up back at the August 3rd meeting. We've brought it up over and over again, and we just have not been able to get any movement on this. There's over 60 permitted uses in the Commerce Center zoning. And for 24 years, I've been coming to different board members and I've been saying, just tell us what you want to do. That's all we really have ever asked for. We want to know what you want to build, so that we know the traffic is going to generate. This plan has no parking lots. I doubt that they're going to do four acres of buildings with no parking lots, but there's no parking lots on the plan, because it's the interpretation of the staff, they, they don't have to show you the size of the parking lots. Well, I calculated it based on IT trip generation. It's twice, three times the size of the Food Lion Shopping Center. The buildings are twice the size. Depending on permitted use, this is a huge development. It's going to require probably more parking than there's room for between the building envelopes. But they're not required to show that according to our staff. And I really think that you guys need to take a step back and work with the staff on this, because if we can't see what they're going to build, there's no way for us to support it or to mitigate it. Regarding the, the 60-plus permitted uses, I've been saying since late August, we don't want restaurants with drive-throughs. That's number 36. We don't want number 43, a motion picture theater. We don't want number 71, which is a car wash, which is a huge pollution issue. If you talk to the town of Ashland or any other localities that dealt with car wash. 72 is gas station. I don't think I need to say why we don't want a gas station next to the creek. And then number 77 is hotel or motel. I've probably sent seven emails asking for, for the five of these to be removed as permitted uses. They won't remove it. We've tried the other way to say, do assisted living, do medical offices, do a commerce center that's actually oriented around each other, so that they'd be compatible uses that could be supported. And that would be something that we could understand and, and, and take to the community. But after two months, and a lot of time spent on this, in the community, talking to neighbors, this is where we're at. So in conclusion, hopefully my neighbors will have something to say to whatever their concerns are, because I do not speak for the neighborhood, even though I've been HOA president for almost 20 years. And it is good to see everyone. Thank you for your time.
Steve Barron, 3492 Richards Run, District 3. Speaking as a citizen of this county, member of Branchway Forest Community. Give you a quick history. Very one from Mr. Melton. August 3rd, we had a community meeting. And he told us a little bit of this, a little bit of that. It was more or less, trust me. And he even made a comment that he was doing this meeting pretty much out of the kindness of his heart. We all know it's required. And he got a little aggravated, I presume. And he threw up, well, it was already a zoned A10, we can put a hog farm there. That's what we've been dealing with since August. That's the attitude we've been dealing with. I'm one of the young people in that neighborhood. Stop and think, and I'm 62 years old. Most people in there older than I. And they were highly concerned about that statement. And then we get to the October 3rd Planning Commission meetings. If y'all haven't seen it, please go watch it. It was watching the Planning Commission meeting, going to one, I've been doing it for a while. It's like looking at the view during the day, it's a nighttime version. We have got to do something about the planning in this county. We got a comprehensive plan. And at that meeting, the representative, I think he got a little frustrated. Said, well, y'all had an opportunity to do something about this comprehensive plan. It's there. That's what you got to deal with. Well, you know, I think it was a split vote, this comprehensive plan was approved. Pretty sure it was. We got a comprehensive plan in the system that the way it's trying to be worked is unbelievable. They're asking us to trust. I would hope we would know what's going in there ahead of time before y'all would vote and ask the neighborhood, you know, the neighborhood understands something's going there, like Mr., like Don said, something compatible to what's there. We can't get an answer. Just trust us. So far, what I've seen, I wouldn't trust. We got a comprehensive plan, in my opinion, that is for some landowners along 60, developers, these engineering firms sitting there wearing this to make what they can make off of it, and some real estate agents. And I know everybody's looking to make money. We don't have a comprehensive plan for the citizens of this county. It's just for a select few. And I ask y'all to please step back, think about what you're doing before you run a very nice neighborhood. I'm not saying, because I live there. It is a nice neighborhood. I'm fortunate, feel like I can live in there. It's just not because of my neighbors, because what's coming down the road to the people this county. I don't want to see this county destroyed. So please, thank you, vote against it.
Thank you, sir. Keith Book, 2246 Branch Forest Way, in the development of Branchway Forest. The developer, Mr. Melton and the developer have been more than generous with the concessions made to the residents of Branchway Forest, with one exception. We would really like to see no hotels or motels there. There's a discussion that it would probably be a mid-tier or higher hotel. It wouldn't be days in or something of a low-quality facility like that. And the Planning Commission last week, the, there was a discussion on proffering out motels and hotels. But in a rather, you know, flippant discussion by the Planning Commission, they made the decision, well, a hotel is going to want to put a six or seven-story structure there. So I had the good fortune, so they said, that's, it's not a reality. It's not going to happen. They're not going to put a hotel there, because we limit the size, the height of the building to three stories. So at my 50th reunion, I had the good fortune to speak with a whole high school buddy of mine, who is an executive with the Hilton Hotels. And he said, absolutely, Hilton Hotels puts in three-story structures, because there are a lot of other towns that limit the height to three stories for various reasons. So I'm here to say, based on firsthand information from an expert, that hotels and motels are not a remote possibility there. They're a distinct possibility, even a three-story version. And I would be very thankful if hotels or motels, number 77, could be added to the list of uses that will be proffered out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, I'm Kathy Carr. I live at 3558 Richards Run. First, I want to say, Mr. Cirillo, I sent you a two-page letter stressing my concern, so I won't go through those. I'll just say it's kind of plus one on everything Dawn has already said. You know, growth is inevitable. At the end of the day, we just want to plan. It's hard to get behind something and to give buy-in to something that you don't know what's going to happen. So for me, I just really need a plan. I need to see what's going to be there. And if it is a hotel, I have a house for sale on Branchway Forest. I'll be happy to sell it anyway. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Flora Majewski, 3502 Richards Run. It's hard to add anything more to what's already been said, because I support everything that has come from our neighbors. Excuse me. I would say definitely no on the walking trails. Most of our neighbors do use the roads to walk on their dogs, their kids, whatever. But one of the other things that had come up in the August meeting with Mr. Melton was expressed as whether or not the pumping of the water is adequate at this address, at this lot, in order for fire, appropriate fire suppression, as the number of businesses, inhabitants, people, whatever the capacity is. And again, we don't know, we're supposed to trust. There's no transparency here. But is that going to be adequate? Are they going to be able, or are they going to have to have a pumping station added in? Now, we've heard all about all the money that's already been spent. Well, number one, it's already been spent. It's not money coming out of our pockets right now. But number two, who pays for the pumping station if that becomes necessary? And again, we could refer back to the stoplight issues as well. I've lived in this neighborhood for more than 25 years. I've been part of Powhatan County since 1970. This is not something that belongs there. Either restrict the uses to, for what can be built there, or don't build there, because there's no way people are going to be walking from there up to Food Lion or to any of the other businesses along Route 60. You've got a death wish if that's what you want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name's Mike Prendergast. I live at 2305 Mary Goodwin Road in Branchway Forest. I have very little to add. I have one request. And that request is, as the planning supervisors from the board, I'd ask you to do no harm. The one thing that we would ask is that, that this community, which has been there for 20-some years, most of us have been there for 20-some years. We have our problems. We've got cut-through traffic, excuse me. That is a real problem in the development. We don't want to see that exacerbated. Ask you, do no harm. We've got the drainage issues with respect to the lake. Again, I would ask that you do no harm. And with regard to the uses, I'm not even sure what to ask, because I have no idea what's planned to go in. As people have said, it's not a question of being against development. We understand the needs of the county. We understand that money has been invested in this property. But as far as what the property can be used for, a property that is adjacent to a residential development, I would ask that with respect to the uses, that you do no harm.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Martha Elder. I live at 3527 Richards Run. I haven't lived there 25 years. Where my husband and I are fairly new to the area, but we are watching and have looked forward to the opportunity to move to Powhatan for a long time. This is a dream come true. I love where we live. I love the rural area. I love the people. Having lived in Chesterfield and watched development happen that took the life out of my community, it hurts to watch a community, to watch a group of children not be safe in their yards any longer because of the development. And I know development's going to happen. But probably the thing that instilled the biggest fear in me was watching the zoning meeting. And they were talking about the slaughterhouse and the idea that they said 10 acres on commercial and 25 on agriculture sent ice through my blood. It really did, to think that on that property next to my neighborhood, that could be approved, a slaughterhouse. It just breaks my heart. And I just, I have so much trust in you as a board, that you will consider the community and the neighborhood when you make these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
We have one hand raised. It is Fran.
Fran? Fran, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
State your name and address, please.
First of all, Mr. Byerly, I'm not going to be speaking about the Spring Branch LLC. Is that already, if I speak about something else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you for doing that.
All right, thank you.
We'll have our public comment period later on. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Not seeing anyone else, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Byerly. Yes, Mr. Cox, could we take a five-minute break before we launch into this?
Five-minute break, yes. Come back to order now. Public hearings closed. Board members, comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cox.
I've got a variety of questions. We lost Mr. Cirillo?
He left.
He's gone. He's gone for the evening.
We're overdoing the five-minute break.
I'm sorry, I extended it a little bit too long. I was the last one to come in. I apologize.
You get points.
Go for that.
There he is.
Yes, we are looking for you, Mr. Cirillo. He's been retrieved. Come on up. There we go. Yeah, bring the water.
I asked for you, Ms. Cirillo. Do we have a proffered conceptual plan? Do we have a proffered conceptual plan?
Okay. Mr. Lackney, could you explain the value, the legal value of a proffered conceptual plan?
Well, first I'll explain the value of a non-proffered conceptual plan is it's not worth the paper it's printed on, because Well, first I'll explain the value of a non-proffered conceptual plan is it's not worth the paper it's printed on because it has no enforceable value. A proffered conceptual plan, on the other hand, becomes part of the rezoning. And if they substantially deviate or wish to substantially deviate from that, they'd have to come back for an amendment.
And it would traditionally show streets, Icarus. It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily show uses.
No, it doesn't. Typically, a proffered conceptual plan doesn't show uses. It just says, depending on the level of detail, depending on the size of the development, just general layout, parking, et cetera.
Don't go far. Mr. Melton, could you come to the podium, please? Thank you for credit for the buffer, but that was Mr. Barley.
Thank you.
No, 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 that's fine. I thought Mr. Barley did a nice job.
I'm not going to say that. I'm always happy going under the radar, trust me.
Just a couple of simple questions. Your relationship to this development is?
I am the real estate agent representing the owners.
You're the real estate, okay. And this piece of property is in a trust?
Yes, it is.
And the trustee is your father?
One of the trustees is my father and the other one is Jack May. He's on the application, Mr. Cox.
Not a problem with that. So are you all planning to develop this or sell it?
Sell it.
Thank you.
And it is under contract. I've said that in the public hearing.
Thank you. Could I have? Now, so this is, what we have is a sales proposal, not a development proposal. And there's a difference. And so I'd like to kind of give you some feeling for that. Katie, could I have slide number three? This is the GITS development proper conceptual plan. Lays out what they were going to do. Could I have slide number four? This is Luckstone conceptual plan. These folks were able, because they are developers, lay out where their project was going, what was going to happen with it, and to provide some level of understanding for the neighbors. What this really does, as I look at it, it talks about pads and selling, you know, what, what size operation is going to go in there? How is the traffic going to flow? How much traffic potentially is there? I don't have any problems with the fact that this particular property is developing. I thought, quite frankly, whether it was, I think it was just multiple, and I don't know whether it's twenty or twenty-one. We had a memory clinic that came in and that was interested in that. Looked like a really nice fit for this piece of property. Didn't work out, so that kind of went away. Mr. Lackney said the piece of paper isn't worth what it's written on. Could I have slide number one, Katie? This, this is the concept plan, I guess is what we're calling it, that went to the neighbors. Okay, and it had seven buildings, three hundred and ten thousand six hundred and fifty-two square feet shown on the buildings. Okay, a layout, streets. Could we go to slide two? This is the one that's in our packet. Has same number of buildings, but it has two hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine square feet. A forty percent reduction. So these don't mean anything. They're just things being moved around. I guess the problem I have with, with not having a proffered conceptual plan, and I'll get into the details of that in a minute, is it takes us back to another period. I've been Mrs. Carmack is about to finish sixteen years of public service. And I've been with her alongside twelve years. So if I had to rate the most significant impact that she's had, it was she led the effort to eliminate the RC zoning district. And that significantly changed our opportunities to get properers, control traffic, and understand what was going to happen along Route sixty. With an unproffered conceptual plan, we are back to where we were with RC. We don't know if our infrastructure development is going to match the needs coming out of this development because we don't know what the, we have no idea what the development is going to do, how it's going to look. All of that that you see is a mirage. It doesn't exist. We don't understand the traffic. We can guess at it, but we don't understand the traffic. And infrastructure should be paid for by the developers, not by the citizens of Powhatan. And so a proffered conceptual plan takes us way down that path. Give you an example. The question of utilities. The real question was, do we need a pump station? Now we're talking about sewer. Sewer is gravity with intermittent pump stations. Do we need one? And the answer, because we put the question to an engineer, the engineer said, tell me about the uses and I'll tell you if you need a pump station. And when we looked at East West, they had to have a pump station. And they were required to build it and pay for it. That pump station was in the neighborhood of eight hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars. We just looked at the cost of a pump station, which the county is going to pay for, for a concession stand. Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So these are big money items. So I don't want to go back to RC. We've got a bunch of folks up and down sixty who want to rezone their property. And they don't want to tell us what they want to do with it. Just rezone it and we'll move on. The rezoning here is to make it more saleable. I get that. I don't have any problem with that at all. What I want is more information about what's going to happen before the current owners hand it off to somebody else who can do whatever they want to do. Kind of three things. First is fairness. We've asked others to give us proffered conceptual plans since Mr. Sorillo's been here. We, we've had with single users. We've had a HVAC contractor headquarters. We've had a funeral home. And we've had a auto repair facility. They've all given us proffered conceptual plans. Not because they were so complicated, but because when that property sells and it will sell at some point, I won't be here, but it'll sell at some point. If the use is substantially different because it needs another, a change to the building, we get to look at it again. I think the example that was used with the HVAC contractor, which is a residential house, which is big enough to be a fast food restaurant, that would change everything dramatically. And so if there's a proffered conceptual plan, then the county and through the county, the citizens have an opportunity to take a look of how their life might change and to be part of the discussion. If it's not proffered, it's done by staff. It's done behind closed doors. That's not necessarily bad, but the citizens don't have an opportunity. And you can't get a proffer for something that now is by right. That means the county is going to pay for, pay for it. So I just think we need a lot more information, which essentially is what a number of the citizens would say. We need more information. There's no rush. This thing has been on the market for a long time. I'd like to see it developed. I'd like to see it develop in, in, in a way that enhances the community. But I don't know enough about it. I don't have enough information. And so, Mr. Chairman, those are my major concerns. I'll have, I'm sure I'll have a couple of questions as we go on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Comments or questions?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Carmack.
A couple of things. Interestingly enough, Mr. Cox, I was going to bring up the whole RC zoning because I like the development. I think it's good. Candidly, I think you would be ignorant to not think that anything was going to go in that area. The thing that bothers me about it ironically is one of the very reasons we got rid of RC was there was no interparcial access. There was no basically ingress egress. And the very thing that this is calling for is eliminating that on a branchway. I mean, that's, that's one of the main reasons we got rid of RC. And I can say it, it seems counterintuitive right now, but mark my words, in ten years, fifteen years, if there's a coffee shop there, a gym there, whatever use may be, and in the morning you, you want to get there, you're going to much rather turn right in off of Branchway than go out, go down, turn up. It's counter to, it's counter to good planning. The whole goal is to keep traffic off of sixty in an interparcel. I mean, it's not a hill I'm going to die on. I'm just saying, mark my words, in ten years, they're going to look back and be like, why didn't we not have, you know, access to this development? I think one of the, the big things with him, with this plan, the applicant has proffered a great deal of buffering, which I think offsets a lot of potential angst issues. And I think the number one concern that people have is the uses that are going in there. That, that, that seems to me, what I heard tonight is, we don't know what's going in there. We don't know what's going in there. The key is though, guys, even if you put up Luckstone, you put up CVS, yeah, they proffered that conceptual plan. But at the end of the day, we still didn't know those uses. There's still, we, we had no idea that a ten-minute oil loop place was coming in at Luckstone. For example, down at Winterfield Place and two eighty-eight, when we rezoned that, we had no idea that it was going to be a childcare center and an ABC store. I, we didn't know the uses. And I think what I would propose, if we don't like the uses in CC and we're not comfortable with those, then get rid of them. But to every time be like, well, we like these uses, but we don't like these uses. Bottom line, if, if you don't like this use on this property, then why are you going to like it two miles down the road? So, you know, shame on us. We've been looking at these uses in Commerce Center now for, for years, for as long as I have been on the, you know, the planning commission and the board. We've been looking at them and looking at them. And, you know, we, we put in measure after measure. We put in a pattern book that every development that comes in has to go back before the planning commission to make sure the architectural standards. That's one thing Mr. Cox and I did on the planning commission. You know, so the architectural standards would, you know, conform because citizens were complaining with the way development was looking on sixty. Could, would the applicant, applicant be willing to proffer the rough layout of the plan right here with, you know, maybe some variation? I don't know if that's something he would consider, but I think it's very tough for them to say exactly what development's going there. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, could I add to that?
Thank you, Mr. Carmack. Sure, go ahead, Mr. Cox.
Not only do we not know the uses, we're in a process of adding more uses. Okay, there are going to be more uses for commerce. We're working through that. We started that with the board with more light industrial. I think what with, with the GITS rezoning and with Luckstone, what you saw were, those were obvious because of where they were. Those were going to be retail operations. And what you saw were pads and sizes. So you had some idea of the size of the development that was going to go into there. And so that gives you, that places, that places some limitations. The other thing is when you start a development, both of those developers had people who are already locked in, who were going to be part of their development. That's offset their infrastructure costs. And so you can't attract additional folks if you mess up the kind of use that you put in. This is a little different because as I look at it, one of the things they talk about is some larger sized developments, but it's all over the map. And, and, and one set of concepts, it's a hundred and seventy-seven thousand square foot facility. And another one, it's eighty-three thousand. So it, it, you don't know. They don't know because this is a sales development. These are not developers. These are not people who aren't going to develop the property. Milton's already told you, we're here to sell it. There's no problem with that. And so it's pretty hard to go forward with, if you're in a sales operation, what you don't want to do is tie the hands of the developer that you've got to sell it to. You can get more money and you can sell it faster. That's, that's fine. There's nothing wrong with that. But I think we need more information. I think we need to be consistent about how we develop our properties, and that means a proffered conceptual plan. I think that will help offset some of the concerns. I'm not an advocate of trying to pin down the uses because that's not going to happen. That's just practically simply not going to happen. But having a better understanding of the infrastructure needs of this property based on the kinds of tenants they'd like to have, and that's pretty hard for the sales folks to do because they're not going to develop it. But we've got other pieces of property up and down sixty who want to do the same thing. I just want to sell it. And here is a list of things that might be there. That's back to RC. Okay, I just don't want to go back to RC. We spent so much time, so much acrimony, lawsuits, getting out of RC to, to go back. And when we have a situation right now that's working well for us, we are being consistent, getting conceptual plans and better understanding of matching our infrastructure needs to the uses. More information for the citizens. Better control of our county as we go, as we go forward. That was, that was the thing with RC. We had no control at all. And so this is the, it's not the project, it's the process that's being used. I don't have really all that much problem with, it's going to develop. This is Carmack said, that's going to happen. I don't know about PDOT and interconnectivity. We've run into them with, probably running into them with the community here. We've run into problems with them with conservation subdivisions, which don't work with interconnectivity. So the citizens, they live there. They've got to listen. They have to do everything they want to do. We've got to listen to them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Carmack.
This is a question for you, Mike. Earlier, why, why, explain why this was A-ten originally and not?
I believe it was rezoned by the county from RC to A-ten.
It used to be RC.
It used to be RC. But it's designated to the cop plan to be Gateway.
Yes, sir. Gateway in the Courthouse Village Small Area Plan.
I see that the, the applicant has, he's put twenty-five percent of his property in repairing buffers and conservation areas. Did he have to do that?
He didn't, but I mean, you really, a lot of that land couldn't be used anyway.
Yeah.
So it, it created a buffer. It's a convenient buffer, natural buffer.
I mean, the whole, if you look at the map, the entire property is surrounded by a big, huge buffer.
Yeah, it is.
Um, I've had, I've talked with many people in Branchway Forest. Someone want connectivity? Some of them want connectivity, some of them don't. But you know what the biggest thing was? It depends what went there. And one of the biggest things they wanted was a steakhouse. I swear, I've heard more about a steakhouse than anybody in Palatine. So, but that, that's fine, but that's what the residents, the ones I have talked to, which have been several, has mentioned said that. So I think the developers, he's prof, I mean, he's done a lot to make the citizens happy and the residents happy. So I like the plan. So.
Anyone else?
I have a few thoughts.
Yes, sir, Mr. Webs.
I've been listening to all the comments. The first question was raised and been answered. Who's going to pay for the pump station?
The developer.
He's going to pay for it?
Yeah, if it's required.
I'm sorry, I don't see that as a profit condition. Is it?
It's in the ordinance. So that's the instruction we got from the interim Public Works Director. He sent us the section in the language and then we looked through that.
Okay, so any sizing that needs to be done is on the developer.
It is on the developer. Anything that's above
Okay.
would be reimbursed by the county.
Okay. The other question I have proposed uses on that, on your presentation says commercial, including senior and medical care. Do they have to do that? Is there any commitment that says that the development has to include those two uses?
It, it doesn't. The, the only thing that they were, the only thing that they've, that they've done is to proffer out uses.
I know, but.
Anything that's left.
Right.
You're right, no.
But it says including senior and medical care. But there is nothing that binds them to doing that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Let me continue with that line of thought. If they come in and they want to do a fast food restaurant?
It would be allowed.
That would be allowed. Does that have the same trip generation as Mr. McClung's Steakhouse?
It does not.
So that's going to lead to my next question. How was the under 5,000 trip generation built?
By the uses that were selected and then given to the engineer who came up.
By the uses that were selected along with the square footage and number of employees, I imagine.
That's correct.
So if there's no commitment to what uses are going to be going in, then the building of the trip generation could be all in the ethernet.
That's right.
So I've got a proposal. It doesn't the applicant to any uses other than ones that have not been proffered out. That could be one use or it could be multiple uses. Not a certain number, but any number of different uses and the pad size could change, couldn't it?
Yes.
Roads could change too, couldn't it?
The internal roads?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Why didn't we do planned unit development?
It's a great question.
Hold on, hold on. I want to turn this into the planning commission. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
So, um, it is, wasn't aware it wasn't allowed in this zoning district. It was a project that I inherited, felt like the wheels were already moving along on this one. But I would have looked at, and we talked early on about doing planned unit development or some sort of plan development.
Some type of plan unit development because it seems to be a butter fit, being as what we are being presented with for approval tonight because otherwise, going back to some previous points that have been made, anywhere where we have proposed on our future land use map, Gateway Development, Commerce Center being the recommended zoning. Somebody could say, well, you know, I would like to have it rezoned. They could do some type of plan that wouldn't be binding and they could get their rezoning. And we, the public, going back to Mr. Cox's point, we'd never see it. It would be done totally by staff. It's site plan review. The community wouldn't know whether they were going to get one use. Whether they're going to get a fast food or steakhouse. They would have no idea. We don't have anything that commits to any type of phasing of this development in terms of if they wanted to do two uses and say, that's it, I'm done. We'll come back later, finish the project. We have, we have essentially nothing. Because there's nothing that's been presented to us that binds the applicant to doing anything other than Commerce Center uses that haven't been proffered out. Is that correct?
Proffered Center, Commerce Center uses that. They have proffered out uses.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, they can do any of the remaining uses in any combination with any number of pad sites, with any changing of the roads. And we don't even know, they used to have something, you know, with VDOT. You know, I'll, I'll go back to, you know, the, how they built the trip generation. For example, it's underneath 5,000. That's what it says. But again, I don't know if these are going to be the actual uses, which were, I suppose, used to build the trip generation to be under 5,000, do I?
No, but they have proffered out the condition that they would have to submit each phase to DOT to be reviewed.
Is that, is that going to be a real traffic impact analysis or is that going to be a traffic report like we got with the, with the packet tonight?
Anything over 5,000 trips, if they were generated, I think overall would require we're kicking a traffic impact analysis by VDOT.
But again, we won't see that until the development is
Started.
Down the road. And the people at Branchway,
Right.
they won't know the traffic impact. We used to have this thing called Chapter 527. Where you would go out, based on the size of the rezoning and the trip generation, you would go out into the traffic network in the surrounding area to gauge the impact. So if I'm in Branchway Forest, I don't really know what the impact is going to be on me until project completion. Because I don't know the uses and I don't know the associated trip generation. I, I'm not, so I want y'all to understand. And I've said this before, we're in transition with the planning department. Mike has come here as the planning director in the middle of a lot of these cases, in fact, all of them, let's be honest. So this is not a base staff. I just want y'all, you know, to understand that.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we're working our way through this. But tho, those are my issues, you know, tonight. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Webs.
For now, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
Um, I would like to counter that to a certain degree. A lot of the recent rezonings we've had have been very singular. It's been a funeral home. It's been an auto repair store. We have had very, very few comprehensive rezonings on a large parcel like this, which is ironically what we have strived to do. We have strived to have more large parcel development on Route 60, not the singular use rezonings. If you have a par, a large parcel like this, you will never know all the uses, as Mr. Cox said, coming in. You will never know that. We, we have them all up and down 60 where we don't have any idea what the use is going to be. At the corner of Dorset and 60, we rezoned of, I forgot how many acres now, 30, 40 acres to light industrial. We have no idea what light industrial uses are going in there. We have more parcels that pads that need to be developed again at the corner of Dorset and 60 by the CVS. There's a big for sale sign right there. We have no idea what that's going to be. We have down at Luckstone, next to the Jiffy Lube Place, you know, there's parcels. So to think that you're going to have an applicant come in and say, you know, this is going to be a fast food, this is going to be a steakhouse, this is going to be a hotel, this is going to be, that, that's not how development works. And as we know, some of those parcels literally take years to develop, years. So it's not like, poof, we're going to rezone this and next week they're going to start building a hotel and, you know, a tattoo parlor and everything else. That, that's not going to happen. It's going to be slow, just slow and far more methodical than people have any idea. I mean, things take literally decades to develop. So it's not something that's going to be poofed and all of a sudden you're going to be worrying about 5,000 cars coming in and out of, you know, the development. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman. How about Mr. Chairman gets a moment here? Would that be all right?
You're the chairman.
I am, thank you. And it is in my district and, and, and not to, to be, you know, anything other than it is in my district. And I know that these people, they either voted for me or they didn't vote the last time, one or the other. This is a, there's a lot of good points on both sides. And, you know, from, from my perspective, when I look at this and I think about this and I look at the developer who's there's proffers that are made. And one thing that I want to understand, and Mike, you can help me with this, I hope, is they've not made a commitment to what the business is that will go in there. They have used businesses that have apparently had interest in the past. I know Mr. Cox talked about the memory. It was actually an Alzheimer facility with a doctor that came in and wanted to develop that. And I met with him. It was probably more like the picture of what's in our comprehensive plan that we wanted it to look like, extremely high density buildings everywhere. And so with this, using the basis of the, the, the types of businesses that have showed interest in the past and then putting a trip generation number on it, I don't know, it was 46, 4700, something like that.
46.
Anything that comes, once they trigger that number, the, the, anything that goes in there, they trigger the, the number of trips, which is your traffic situation and everything else that comes along with the number of trips. There's a site plan review required, right? That site plan review, that's not going to be something that's reviewed by the board of supervisors. It's reviewed by staff, correct?
That's correct.
And the where that takes me to is the board of supervisors set up the permitted uses, correct?
Mm-hmm, that's right.
And when you review comprehensive plans, you have numerous public hearing or public meeting places where the public's invited, kind of like the, the community meeting that was held for this rezoning application. And that's where the public needs to get involved. Because if we don't hear from you, we don't, we don't know. And these are all permitted uses that's there now. Are they going to change? The next board may change and this board may change. It's all under review. I know that. But there are permitted uses that are there that I think in an effort on behalf of, of the applicant, they've tried to remove many of them to give a little bit more, I don't know if it gives peace of mind to the citizens in, in, in Branchway Forest or not. But I think that in an effort of people working together, it, it's, everybody's got to have a little give and take. Is there a perfect situation? Probably not. Is there a situation to where the, the, I think the, the applicants give some, I think residents in Branchway have tried to be somewhat flexible on some issues. I've had the emails go back and forth with Mr. Rissmeyer. I've seen those. And you know, they've increased buffers. When they've increased the buffers, that sort of makes it a little bit more of a hidden development. And I know in, in doing comprehensive plan updates, I remember looking at one of those and it was in Williamsburg and there was trees in front of the entire development. And members on this board said, I love that. I can't see anything behind there. That's wonderful. We need those trees. And, you know, I, I get into the, the rural character and understand that to a degree, but you know, I have the benefit of having lived here a long time ago and, and I see what rural was in terms of the, the rural character. You want to compare rural to Chesterfield. We are rural, all of us compared to Chesterfield County. We're on a quarter acre lot or a postage stamp lot. But there's no farms, dairy farms. They've been cut up. And you talk about how long it takes to develop this, a housing development, you take Tillman's Farm. That's in my district. That started in 2003, I think, was the, the date that it started. 2003. It's not built out yet. We're 20 years later. It's not built up. That's a housing development. And we're trying to do some, some retail business. I, I'm, I'm very much in favor of having good businesses. Can I predict what the good business is going to be? No. But I sure listened to a story tonight about the mill on Fine Creek where they came in, wanted some conditional use permits so they could do a business and had to jump through hoop after hoop after hoop after hoop to make sure we were protecting everything. And, and it's turned out to be fabulous. Sometimes you get fabulous ones and sometimes you don't. The ones that aren't fabulous, they're not here. They're not in existent. They leave. They go out of business. We don't want that. We want businesses to come into this county and thrive. The pump station part of this situation, from my understanding, the way I read this, the site plan review comes to you in the planning department. And you send it to Public Utilities and they decide that this particular type of business needs to go from an eight inch pipe to a 10 inch pipe. That's on the developer's dime. That's not on the county's dime. That's not on the citizen's dime. That's on the developer's dime. I'm not a developer. I'm not a planner either, but I listen to what you say. I've, I've taken your information that you give me and others that I've experienced within the past. When XYZ business comes in and they're told you got to go from an eight inch to a 10 inch, if I'm the developer of the property and I'm thinking I'm going to have something a little bit larger later on, I'm probably just going to pay the extra money and get the 12 inch pipe. So I don't have to come back later, dig up ground that I've already dug up once to increase the size of the pipe. That's the developer's situation. That's up to them. They can negotiate with whoever the next business is that comes in, say it's a hospital, just for example. And, and, and the hospital says, you know, this is what we want to do. And the developer begins the negotiation process. If it's $3 million to increase the size of the pipe, maybe they split it. That's their situation, not ours. We have the protection that in order for us to go forward, they have to, developer has to pay for that. I looked at the comments from our interim utilities person, no comment. I, 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 I look at this development and there is. And there is, as, as, as Mr. McClung said, there's some that's in favor, there's some that's not in favor. And, you know, it, it, that's the way it is sometimes. They're not all wonderful, great situations. And, you know, we appear got elected and we take the bullets for that and that's how that works. I think that, uh, there's, there's some phasing with this traffic situation. I, 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 I look at, I'll go back to a question I think Mr. Cox brought up at the very beginning with Mr. Latchney. The term that was used, I think, was, is there a legal value to a proffered conceptual plan? And I, I, I don't think, I think what Mr. Latchey said is, you know, the, what we have now is not worth anything, not what the paper was written on.
Cause it's not a proffered plan. It's just, it's a-
Right.
A- aspirational plan, we'll call it.
Okay. And so my question to you would be, if it's just an aspirational plan, is it required by law that they put a proffered conceptual plan forward?
No, it's not.
Which, it's not, not required by law. But Powhatan County, if we wanted to put that in our ordinance, we could do that. Am I right or wrong?
Yeah, we could make a conceptual plan part of your rezoning application requirement to be part of your application.
That's right. But we don't have that, right?
Right, not right now.
And I'm just gonna tell you, I've heard it tonight. And no disrespect to anyone on this board, because I actually have a lot of respect for most that's up here. You got twelve years of experience, sixteen years of experience, eight years of experience. And we don't have that in our ordinance. And our ordinance is the law for this county. The ordinance is the law. So, if you wanna blame somebody, blame us. We didn't write the law that said you have to have a proffered conceptual plan. And you know what, folks? This is my, I, I'm in the year number four and there's, there's two months left. And every year, we've reviewed the comprehensive plan. We reviewed it every year. So, I'm gonna tell you, based upon what I see and, and what I hear, I'm gonna make a motion that in court, in accordance with Section eighty-three dash one-two-three F-four of the Powhatan County Zoning Ordinance and Public Necessity Convenience, General Welfare and Good Zoning Practice, the Board of Supervisors approves of the request submitted by Spring Branch LLC on Tax Map Forty-One Dash Twelve C, twenty-six-twenty Anderson Highway, subject to the conditions presented in this report. Second, is there any comments, decisions, questions, debates, please? Mr. Williams?
I'm back.
Take off, sir.
Mr. Byler was right. There's nothing in our ordinance that requires a proffered conceptual plan. Yet, I can tell you in previous years, we've required it. Not because it was in our ordinance, because we thought at those times it constituted a good planning. It was a good idea. Because we thought it worked best if we did for all parties. Now, we can debate, you know, time immemorial, whether it was a good thing or bad time, and we probably wanna agree. But I can tell you, in my opinion, it did work. Because I can remember when the applicant deviated, they had to come back to the board. And when they came back to the board, the board had to approve the changes and the public had to be informed of the changes. So, I was in support of that. I still am. So, going forward, you know, that's something, you know, we can, you know, consider or not consider, you know, adding to our ordinance. Mrs. Carmack's right. It does take a period of time for development to come in. Mr. Byler is also right. Tillman Farms has taken a great deal longer than anybody ever imagined. Because when Tillman Farms came in, it was back in the go-go years. When everything was getting rezoned in the county, back in that period between oh-four and oh-eight, and then what happened? The bottom went out of the tub. And everything came to a screeching halt. Twenty-ten, we didn't know if the world was gonna quit spinning. And we're still trying to recover from a lot of what we did back in those years where we had sprawl. The rezonings took place in the western end of the county. I can only recall one that took place in the east in District One, and that was the Preserve. And of course, that struggled to develop as well. And I'm not, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that I'm naive enough to think that we're gonna have to lay out every use that's gonna be coming in. Cause that's not realistic and, and both Mr. Byler and Mrs. Carmack are right about that. What I am saying is, when we have a conceptual plan that's proffered, when we know, for example, at Winterfield Two, that there's apartments and there's X number of pad sites, it's gonna be commercial, it's gonna be office, and you have something that you know that you're working off of, it's a lot easier. It's a lot easier for us and it's a lot easier for the public to say, yeah, I think this is a good project. But when we find ourselves in situations like we are tonight, and again, this is the first one, you know, Mike has had where we've had any real sizable development. The rest of them have been a single use. This is different. But anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Sorely.
Um, I would like to say that, um, there are a lot of issues with the code. And one of them is procedural and information that staff has. I'm new to Powhatan and new to Virginia. So, a lot of these concepts are new to me, but the overall way that we do planning is pretty universal. Uh, as you know, I'm a designer. That's my training, not as a planner. There are some absolute solutions that could prevent this from happening in the future. Um, and it comes down to a decision and a choice of what we decide to do. I am surprised that in Powhatan, that site plan approval is not required in a public hearing for projects that are over X amount of square feet or X amount of acres or by some established condition. I frankly, I've never seen that before. And I think that could help to resolve this issue. I think that another potential issue is to only allow rezonings with specific uses in mind. Now, there may be some constitutional issues with that, but it's a question and it's a way to perhaps address the concerns. I've heard the neighborhood. I understand their concerns. And I'm faced with an ordinance that doesn't help me very much. I think we, we should have standards for conceptual plans. I don't have any guidance someone I'm supposed to ask for. Traffic studies? I need something articulated in writing in black and white that says, this is required under these circumstances. Same thing with utilities and sidewalks. Utilities are difficult because we don't have many utilities master plan. It's hard to predict where utility should go in the future because we don't know what the uses in adjacent properties. But if we had a utilities master plan that was tied to our comprehensive master plan so that we could focus our infrastructure and resources in areas that we want to grow, that would help us. So, um, I apologize for being new. But, you know, there is a lot of potential, but we, we do have a lot of work at the very core to change the rules and expectations for the public and for the private sector. Doesn't influence this vote, but I did, like, it was important to say that.
You know, the comments, questions? Mr. Shorten, a little roll call.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. McClung?
Hi.
Mr. Cox?
I'm sorry, Mr. McClung.
Hi.
Everybody knows where this is going. I mean, you already know what the votes are. We've breached, uh, some good planning practices that we've had in place tonight. I regret that. They've served us well in the past. And for that reason, I can't support this.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye. Pushed past.
Have a little order, please. Thank you. Public comment period is now open. You'd like to come ahead and speak to the board? On an individual basis, you have three minutes. He's gonna be out for a group, five minutes. You state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Gosh Winderman. I have a question. They're talking about our cuts, about cutting off pieces of land to make smaller lots for affordable housing. The problem with the three acre lots that created, those are gonna go for, I've been trying to look at property in Powhatan for years, trying to get a place. And, uh, I mean, a one acre lot is a minimum of a hundred thousand plus in Powhatan. Is there a way that they could explore the feasibility of taking these large lot subdivisions? Where you have a subdivision, there's like three acre lots and two acre lots and six acre lots and try cracking off, um, a quarter, a quarter acre lot off of one of them or a half acre lot. Like, it's like if you had a subdivision of like, say, thirty or forty homes, like, create like five quarter acre or half acre lots from that. Like, just add the den- increase the density of the subdivision by like twenty percent to try to create some more affordable housing. Cause it's next to impossible to find a quarter acre or half acre lot in Powhatan.
Thank you, sir. If anyone wants to-
No, sir.
Closed. County attorney comments?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
County administrator comments?
Uh, just in case there's anybody new that joined, particularly online, I'll just reiterate my comments. Route thirteen road closure starting tomorrow. There's information on our Facebook page about that. And, uh, if you wanna trick or treat, come to the Village on Halloween. Also, information on our Facebook page about that.
I have one thing, Mr. Chair.
Four comments?
I have one, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Um, keep in mind, this is for the residents of Powhatan. We pay, the residents pay ninety-two percent of our taxes. Eight percent comes from business. Eight percent, that, that ratio is way off. We need business in this county. And, uh, it's been like that for years, but we need to do something to help the taxpayers of this county. Um, you get complaints every year about lower the tax rate, lower the tax.
Excuse me, Mr. McClung. If you gentlemen would please keep it down just a little bit while he's speaking. Thank you.
To my second thing, um, tomorrow night, I have a town hall from seven to eight at the Company Two Firehouse. It's my fifth or sixth one, um, open to everybody. And tomorrow night, we'll be talking with representatives from the PLI class of twenty twenty-four to trying to sign people up. So, I have representatives there talking about PLI. It's a great organization in Powhatan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other board members, comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Comment? Mr. Williams? Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
I saw him get upset at meetings. But tonight, public comment, the first public comment, if you weren't in this room and you weren't moved by the speakers, the people that were here that spoke to the situation in Israel, to the woman who talked about her two-year-old child, to the gentleman who hearkened what is going on right now in Gaza, to Dresden and World War Two, then something's wrong with you. That was extremely moving tonight. What the sheriff and what Mr. Marcellus has put together, you know, for the county, which now seems to metastasize across Virginia and across the nation. I'm very proud of what they've done. And again, as we talked earlier about the situation that these people find themselves in, you can't help but be moved and thankful for everything that we have in Powhatan County and not want to do something to help.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mrs. Carmack?
Um, just one last thing for my colleagues that I would may add to the agenda for our November meeting is the elimination of solar farms from our zoning ordinance. It seems like more and more the citizens of the county don't want them. They're a burden on staff. They're a burden on our time. They create a lot of friction. Let's, we have, we did our due diligence. We have solar farms. At least kind of be thinking about that. I would like you guys to entertain that thought of just getting rid of them. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, you want them on the next agenda, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
You, you got that, Brett?
Loading you guys up.
All right. Um, okay. Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Cox. Just a suggestion to Mrs. Carmack. You should be able to figure out pretty quickly if there's support for that on the board. And don't put it on the, put it on the planning commission's agenda. Okay, not on our agenda, okay? No, but I would support that. I mean, so you've got three people to send it to the planning commission right now. So, let's not lose
time.
Time. So, to- Trust me, I'm one, I don't ever wanna lose any time. Do we have to send that to the planning commission?
Yes, cause it's changed to our-
Ordinance, okay. Then, uh, and you're okay with that, Mr. Plannin? You have three, but you probably have all five. Hopefully, there'll be some folks that come out and listen to that. Maybe they can get the facts as opposed to the audacious stories that they put out. I don't have any comments. We're adjourned.